For Tim's honor to read the pledge of allegiance, please.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we get a roll call?
Vice Mayor Harvey?
President.
Councilmember Aggermonte here. Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Henley?
Here.
Mayor Harrington?
President.
Thank you.
City manager, would you like to give us a report from the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Harrington. Members of the council, we held a closed session on labor negotiations, received direction from council, but have nothing to report out. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no changes to the agenda, is there a motion?
Second.
A roll call?
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
And now on to public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, unless otherwise permitted under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name and giving your address. Thank you. Hi, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor Harrington. Ken Brown, 1396 Lubbock Street in the Sadeev-Sonoma. The Sonoma Valley cannabis enthusiasts will be having their meeting on July 9th. Phil Cattori, a Sonoma resident, an expert, excuse me, an expert in organic farming who lives here in Sonoma, will present his impact on farming practices to our group as it applies to cannabis. This is at Hot Monk at 3:00 PM. I need to make a public apology to the Community Services and Environment Commission, to the staff, and to its members. My behavior of late has not been what it should be, and I apologize for that. I will do better in the future. I've met with the chair, Fred Auerbach, and David Morell, and I believe I got set straight and will do a better job of containing myself in the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. Are there any meeting dedications?
None.
Yeah, okay. We don't have any presentations this evening, so we will move on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, the council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Are there any council questions about the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull 4.2 and 4.5.
Okay. And with that, we'll take it out to public. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar, excluding items 4.2 and 4.5? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council and we can have a, I guess we'll do those items first before we approve the other items, which doesn't matter.
No, go ahead and deal with the other items first, and then we'll deal with 4.2 and 4.5, so.
Okay. Do we have a motion on 4.1, 4.3, 4.4, and 4.6, 7, and 8?
I move to approve items 4.1, 4.3, 4.4, 4.6, 4.7, and 4.8 of the consent calendar.
Second?
Sure. I have a question. I believe we have people in the audience to speak on 2.8, or at least, or 4.8, or at least comment on it. I don't know if I should pull that one out so we can actually have a comment on it, or go back to public comment.
To pull?
You want to just?
Yeah, if you could take that one out of your motion.
Do I have to say it all again?
So a motion, we have a motion to, if that's accepted, a motion to-
Approve all members, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Shouldn't interrupt the mayor.
No, go ahead.
I'd like to pull, approve all items on the consent calendar save for 4.8, 4.5, and 4.2.
Second? Second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call?
Please.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, city manager.
Okay, so 4.2 is a resolution to execute contracts with Sonoma Ecology Center for next year. These are one-year contracts for the maintenance of the Montini Preserve and Sonoma Overlook Trail, Nathanson, Oxbow, and the Demonstration Garden. So I'll turn it to Colleen Ferguson, our Public Works Director, who's been leading this project.
Yeah, so as described in the staff report, the Sonoma Ecology Center has been providing services to the city really since the Montini Preserve came into the city hands and supporting the city taking on that large, open space type park and the hiking trails there, and also acting as the nonprofit sponsor for the Sonoma Overlook Trail stewards. So one of the two contracts that is part of this item would be for Sonoma Ecology Center to continue providing services for one year with somewhat new staff and new team, with a lot of fire, fuel expertise, and trail construction expertise that's new on the team at Sonoma Ecology Center, and a more defined contract than we have had before, with more clarity on expectations from the city and more engaged contract management as part of the proposal for this next fiscal year, for a contract for Montini and Sonoma Overlook Trail, and then a separate contract related to the Demonstration Garden at MacArthur and Second Street East, and the Oxbow on Nathanson Creek that's kind of across the street from the Demonstration Garden. It's an area that, again, is protected by an open space easement and supports native vegetation along Nathanson Creek, and Sonoma Ecology Center has been providing services there, and this is to have, again, more defined contract terms and clarity and expectations on both sides and active management of a contract for both of those. And I do have Jason with Sonoma Ecology Center here to address any questions and to talk about their team.
And I would just add one item. I know that there, we have received from members of the public and council concerns, especially about Nathanson Preserve and Oxbow over the past few years. And I think we, so we have had a number of conversations with Sonoma Ecology Center, and one of the things that our Public Works Director has done is really working on providing some clear expectations and standards, which didn't exist before. And this, part of the reason this is a one-year contract, it is a new team, we have confidence that the new team can meet our requirements, and if that doesn't occur, then we will be bidding this work out next year. So I'll be happy to answer any questions of the council.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Yeah, I do. Thank you so much. I'm glad this has come forward, and I really appreciate the fact that you, Colleen, have made this effort, because I think that there's something happening there on East MacArthur, and I think it's, looks like a forest design in an urban area. And so that's what makes, I think I'm finding people are unhappy with. So I'm glad that you've put somewhat of a restriction to follow up and to ensure with that contract that there is actually adherence to being able to, you know, direct the maintenance of those two properties. They look pretty bad, most, I shouldn't, I hate generalizing. There are times that it's, it's pretty bad. It looks like a country trail. And it's sitting across, you know, MacArthur Place. They have a new restaurant, they're spending thousands or whatever in there, and it's still, it still looks like that. And so I'm really pleased that you've paid, that you've paid special attention to it.
Are there any other questions? Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on item 4.2? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Are there any other council comments on item 4.2? Councilmember Henley?
I'm glad to see that we have a little more specificity in this contract. From what I understand, there's been competing philosophies of what having a land dedicated to native plants looks like, and how much human involvement, and some philosophies of like, they should just grow the way they would grow in the wild, other people thinking it is in the middle of our city and it should be a little more maintained. So I'm glad that it is now on paper, and I have confidence that they'll do a good job, but I'm glad that we get a chance to talk about it. So I'll be supporting this, and I can make a motion if anyone else-
Oh, I was gonna comment also. Anyone else? Any other comments? Oh, I just want to say that the renewal of this contract gave me a great opportunity to meet with the Ecology Center and go over what they do already, and also their philosophies, and that was really valuable. And I learned a lot, well, about this topic in general, but their operations. And I think, you know, they were just recognized as a top nonprofit in our state, and they are doing a lot of great work. And so I think the annual review is healthy and good, and it is important for them to hear the feedback from the community about where the balance should lie. And I think my experience was they were very receptive to that, so I think it's good.
Just one other thing that we're proposing with this next year's contract is on both properties, both the ones on MacArthur and the ones overlooking Sonoma, they do have volunteer days and encourage the community to come out and help. And so we're gonna, as partners with Sonoma Ecology Center on management of these city properties, we're gonna help promote that, post it on our website. It's a volunteer day, and come on out and get to know the parks and help take care of them.
That sounds fun. Great. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
A roll call?
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
I'll turn it back to city staff.
Okay, next one is 4.5. This is just, this is the second reading of the Cannabis Regulatory Ordinance that council approved at your last meeting. So if you recall, we, there was, this basically lays out commercial cannabis and how the city will regulate it. We removed a variety of items and put them in administrative guidelines we'll be working on. So this is kind of a thin regulatory ordinance, and this is the second reading. So if there's specific questions from council members, I'm happy to look to Mr. Store or Mr. Walter, who have been the lead with us on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Aggermonte?
Sure, thank you. I know that the last time we, I can't find my paperwork, but we've just received a big bulk of paper, but I can't find my paperwork, but I know we were working on regulations, and we got past that, and now this is zoning. But I still, you know, I voiced my opinion on, on this whole issue, and I just wanted to pull it, just to reiterate that I am not for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that want to comment on item 4.5? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the city council for discussion or a motion.
Do you want me to?
Councilmember Harvey?
I'd move to approve item number 4.5, conducted a second reading and adopted an ordinance adding chapter 5.36 to the Sonoma Municipal Code permitting and regulating commercial cannabis business, and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, section 1561B3, and California Business and Professions Code, section 26055H, planning and community service, oh, yeah, thought through that part.
I will second that, and one brief comment, because many things have been said about this topic, but I wanted to personally thank some of the people who have been working on this a very long time. Gil Latmer, I don't think I see him in the room today, who's been our somewhat reluctant community organizer about this issue, and he's done a great job. And then we have Jewel and Ken up here in the front row, who's been working on this for long before my time. So it's exciting to get to this point.
I agree. Can we have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries 3-2.
And now, I think on item 4.8, the request was just to allow public comment.
I can do ages 30 seconds, that this is a good news item. The county, and through some state funding, there's a variety of, $830,000 coming to Sonoma Valley for homelessness. That includes $250,000 out of the county's general fund. And so we are receiving $245,000 as a city to help renovate the Haven, and there's $65,000 that will go to another, that was given to us initially, but we are supporting reauthorizing to go to Interfaith West, one of the nonprofits that's gonna be providing services in the valley. So that is the city's piece of this. With that, turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. And if there's no council questions, Kathy King? Nice to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Kathy King, and I live in Moon Valley Mobile Home Park, and I'm the Executive Director of Sonoma Overnight Support. And I just have a brief statement because things, this is an exciting time for us. I'm very pleased and thankful that the city of Sonoma has received a grant of $245,000 from, they call it HEEP, from the county to fund and upgrade the Haven. We're so grateful for the help of the ad hoc homeless task force, councilperson Madeline and Rachel, who continues to support SOS and our work with the homeless and the hungry in Sonoma. As you know, homelessness is a complex issue. It's growing because of the lack of affordable housing, high rents. Sonoma County Homeless Count will be out at the end of the year. Some preliminary reports have come from San Francisco. They've been putting millions and millions of dollars into homelessness, and they have an increase of 17%. They're now calling it an epidemic. Here in Sonoma, at the Haven, we're doing what we can one person at a time, serving them with dignity and compassion. Our day services include meals, laundry, shower, bus passes, counseling, clothing, and more. In the month of May alone, we did 2,221 services to 64 different, unique people. It was an increase of services of 31%, an increase of people by 15%. This is not going away. SOS also applied for the HEEP funding and was awarded a grant of $94,738 for next year's winter shelter at Sonoma Alliance Church. The first time ever, we got almost all of the funding we asked for, ever, from the county. Effective July 1st, we're gonna transition into a navigation center for homeless services using a multifaceted approach to helping homeless in Sonoma. Our goal is to integrate our local social services with other providers. We will continue to have emergency housing at the Haven, but not long term. We hope to move people on to other shelters in the county more quickly through collaboration of four other nonprofits. This is, this is a first-time thing. Interface Shelter Network will provide coordinated entry, rapid rehousing, and case management. Share Sonoma and the Vintage House will seek out seniors who are precariously housed and also try to batch them up with, with, if they have an open room in their house, with our homeless clients. Sonoma Valley Community Health Center has a program that, again, all of these services will be one day a week at the Haven called Whole Person Care. We will evaluate our clients and match them for services for mental illness. In addition, SOS will be offering classes that will match the skills that our clients will need. We are surveying them at this particular time. We're gonna expand the hours of our day services. And so we're also getting people like, the senior staff at West America Bank is gonna come in and do financial management for folks. And then in closing, we at SOS are very grateful for the ongoing support from the city of Sonoma, the city council, the city manager, and the police chief. We're honored to continue our services to the homeless, to the hungry, and we hope that we can continue our partnership and collaboration with you. And I'll take any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any council questions? Questions for Kathy or comments?
For Kathy. Kathy, the health, the health center and Haven will be doing coordinated entry?
No. Well, they are doing coordinated entry at the health center, but it's not working, so.
That's Catholic charities?
That's correct.
Okay.
Not working to the amount that they want it to work. So Interface Shelter Network has a staff person who says he can work wonders. It's gonna come from nine to 12 on one day a week, and then from, you know, 12 to 3 on the second day of the week, and try to sign everybody up, and then try to place- and try to sign everybody up and then try to place them in housing and place them in shelters. I mean, you can sign somebody up, but you can't, if you don't get them somewhere to go, then there's no sense of having the coordinated entry. So that's, that's the impetus. Also, at the Vintage House, there'll be a full-time staff person trying to match the seniors with housing and those that are precariously housed with someone that can live in their house and help them stay in their house. So we want to prevent homelessness with that collaboration.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just add one more thing? And I know someone who went through that system with the organization Catholic Charities. The person did that. They were not told about food programs locally. They were told you're going on a list and it'll take months for you to get housed. And these are, you know, these are people that, you know, we feed them, but you know what? Some of them don't have cars. They're walking miles just to get sandwiches around town. Because if you look at the food programs, they're all over the valley.
Right.
So that's what's expected. So I was disappointed in that. And I hope that, I think our meeting is August sixth. And it would be nice to find out exactly what's, how that's being done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Can you just, you touched briefly on the kind of pairing of seniors that you're working with at Vintage House. There's gonna be a benefit. Could you expand on that a little bit and talk a little bit about the success of that program?
Full-time staff person is being hired by Share Sonoma. There's never been a full-time staff person in Sonoma to do the share program. This person used to work at the Vintage House. He has relationships with people there. He will be onsite one day a week and he will be doing outreach, both with media and one-on-ones to sign up seniors so they can stay in their houses. And then, so then people that are precariously housed can find a room and someplace to live. So we're really excited about that program. That program works. And if there's someone full-time at the Haven, full-time at the Vintage House, we can make things happen.
Councilmember Hunley?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment for Ms. King and everybody else. But so this, the city of Sonoma specifically is getting two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to improve our facilities for homelessness services, which I'm sure is most we've ever gotten for this function. And the SOS City Partnership's been going on for, what, ten years now?
Two thousand and seven, yeah.
Yeah, it's, and it's, you know, I would say it's been laudable in that we're so small as a city. But we've been the only small city in Sonoma County to have a shelter this entire time. And there's been a lot of supporting organizations, so many food programs, Vintage House has been great. And it's just wonderful to see this huge influx of money finally coming into the valley area and the willingness of all of the organizations to work together and to provide services we've never seen here before. And so why.
But I think it's credit to you and to Madeline, to the city manager, that we really stood firm and said, the services should come in here. The money should come in here. And it was, we got thirty thousand one year for three years in a row for the winter shelter that cost almost a hundred thousand dollars.
It was, it was pulling teeth for a few years there. And last summer, when we decided.
So congratulations.
We were gonna push back a little bit and it's just amazing. And I'm excited to see everything that's happening. And I think that even though homelessness around California is becoming an epidemic, absolutely, I think that the benefit that we have here is our scale, but also our commitment as a community and the organizations we have. And I think this money, I think that we're gonna actually be able to do a lot of good here. So I'm excited about it. And so obviously, I'll be supporting this.
Are there other comments? Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, I just wanna thank you, Kathy. And I'm so proud of the work that you're doing and the work that my fellow council people here, Rachel and Madeline have done to support your services. I had the opportunity to tour SOS recently. And the amount of programs that are being run there to help members in our business community meet with these people to provide food, to provide shelter. I think that that senior program you're running with Vintage House, that pairs seniors that are starting to not be able to afford their own homes or the home's too big, they need help cleaning, with people that don't have homes, I think is a fantastic way and a creative solution to a dual problem. And I just think it's wonderful that you're here and thank you for all your hard work, because it's really a lot that the Haven takes on.
Well, we have a lot of support from our businesses, the church community, and the other nonprofits in Sonoma. So we're real grateful. So thank you.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And I just wanted to comment, rarely in government life do things take a complete radical turn for the better. That's unusual. And here we were, gosh, how long ago was it we were getting no funding?
Zero.
And we had to find some emergency funding from our budget. Madeline really worked hard on that. And then we had this really dynamic subcommittee. And it's just, I think it should be noted that it is really hard to go from something that is about to fail with the county saying, we're not gonna fund you at all, and turn it around into the best program we've ever had. And that's kudos to all of you and thank you for all your hard work. And I just think it's amazing. It's sort of like, great things do happen in Sonoma. It's sort of amazing things happen here and this is one of them. So it's.
And I think I, you know, my word harbinger, although Fred Alabak says I say it wrong. And, but harbinger. Now Margaret Van Fleet has left. Jenny is leaving as well. That leaves us in a very precarious position. We have to make sure that we still have our gauntlet and we're not going to put it aside because we'd want someone new coming in and saying, how did they get that money? But I think the secret is possibly Rachel and I can go to guerrilla training from the Russian River. Because they know how to get things done. And maybe we could learn how to do that from them, Rachel. Thank you.
You seem pretty adept. Is there a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Sonoma, California, to accept a two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar in homeless emergency aid program, HEAP, grant funding for the renovation of the Haven Homeless Shelter and Navigation Center, support shifting of sixty-five thousand dollars in funding for the purchase and operation of a van to Interfaith Shelter Network and authorizing the city manager to implement. I wanted to say one thing about the van, because we came up with this crazy idea to buy this van, because our services are kind of spread apart and we want to make sure everyone can get where they want to go. And so we got the money for it, but then it became a question of finding who had the capacity to operate and insure this van. And I have to give it to Interfaith Shelter for accepting our van and taking care of it and insuring it for us.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Yeah.
A roll call. Who is Councilmember Aggermonte?
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Great. And now on to item five point one. The, well, five point one, just to note, is a public hearing that's been canceled and there will be no discussion of that item. No, we're doing five point two. Five point one was the one that was, yeah. Now on to item five point two. This is a continued public hearing from June third, twenty nineteen. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to adopt a resolution to grant or deny an appeal of the Viviani Trust of the Planning Commission's action, Resolution Number three dash twenty nineteen, a resolution relating to the expiration slash vesting of a two thousand and four use permit for the Sonoma Cheese Factory Development Project located at two West Bain Street, APN eighteen one sixty-two oh oh four, and finding that consideration of the expiration of the use permit is within the scope of the previously approved categorical exemption for the project pursuant to Section fifteen three oh three of State CEQA Guidelines, new construction or conversion of small structures. And I guarantee you that that was written by an attorney. That was quite a paragraph. Thank you. City staff, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harrington. I will turn it to, so the presentation tonight will be by David Store, our Planning and Community Services Director, and Jeff Walter, our city attorney. So we do have a PowerPoint presentation to go through and provide, kind of, just to lay out some of the key information. And so with that, I'll turn it to Mr. Store.
Thank you. Good evening. Before you tonight is an appeal action from an action taken by the Planning Commission earlier this year in February regarding the Sonoma Cheese Factory use permit that was granted in two thousand and four. By way of history, just a brief background, in January of this year, the Viviani Trust requested a determination of whether the two thousand and four use permit that was granted was still valid or not. And on the twenty-first and twenty-fifth of February, the Planning Commission determined that the use permit had not, based on its review of the materials provided to staff in their application, also the testimony of the public. The subsequent to that action on February twenty-fifth, the action was appealed by the applicant, the Viviani Trust, and that was specifically relating to Resolution zero-three two thousand and nineteen. The city council actually had this scheduled for June third and it was continued to this date. So a little bit of a history lesson that you probably all can do better than I can. But in looking at the documents, there was actually two specific things that were being requested in two thousand and four. The first portion of the use permit, if you will, was the actual conversion of the manufacturing area, which had ceased in two thousand and one, wanting to have the balance of this property developed as retail, as a shopping center. And I'll get into that a little bit later. But first of all, I'd like to explain the color coding here, because in a minute or two, you're gonna see a diagram that shows you the locations of these specific areas. And, but before I do that, and I won't go through each one of these listed numbers, one through six, know that the second part of the use permit in two thousand and four request was to actually do some expansion areas. So there was one to convert existing square footage. And then the second part was to add new square footage, net new square footage, to expand the use. You can see here on the bullet number two, is it would have been almost twenty thousand square feet with a net new total of eighty-four hundred square feet, eighty-four sixty, as you can see there. The reason for the application was not that they needed a permit, a use permit from the Planning Commission to do retail uses within the Sonoma Cheese Factory, but because they were requesting more than two tenants within that area. And so with your development code saying that three or more requires a use permit, that's why they requested that action in two thousand and four by the Planning Commission to allow retail use to three or more tenants. So again, going back to my color coding, you can see from this diagram, from left to right, I'll explain the crosshatch that you see there. The, it is really the second-story office area that was present in two thousand and four, along with an area, the perfect square there you see, which is twenty-eight hundred and sixty square feet. That was being used as retail. And as you'll find later on, that was also where deli operations were being conducted. Area A is the area that the Planning Commission identifies, excuse me, the applicant identifies an area that they want to expand, along with areas B and C. And the respective square feet footages were there. That was portion one, use permit one, that was being requested for a remodel, if you will, or a conversion to retail for all of the areas A, B, and C on top of what was already there, which included the second-story office space. What you don't see so clearly there are the areas that are circled, numbers one, two, three, and four. You'll see that they're on the westerly portion of the site, the northwesterly portion of the site, and the northeastern portion of the site. Number one being a small area of three hundred and eighty-four square feet. Number two is a two-story structure of twenty-three hundred square feet each. Number three is a two-story of twelve hundred square feet. And then you can see number four, which is a thousand ninety-six square feet. The action taken by the Planning Commission was to, excuse me, let me just go back. The action taken by the Planning Commission was to unanimously approve the remodel conversion space, but they continued the expansion request off calendar to the discretion of the applicant, especially to allow them to resolve some issues relating to historic parking allowances. And at the time, the city council was then looking at a parking study in the downtown area. There were also issues, when you read the minutes, which is one of your attachments, that talks about some concerns with the Adobe, the servants quarters and the historic Adobe area. And there were some issues related to water intrusion, because there was landscaping proposed on that easterly side of the property. So going back to the entitlement, you'll see that the shopping center was for the, from left to right, the purple, the area A, B, and C. Again, none of the other expansion requests were approved by the Planning Commission. Subsequent to the approval of the use permit, three specific building permits were approved by the city. Without going into the detail here, you can see the dates when they were timely filed before the expiration of the use permit, which had a life of one year from its original approval after the appeal period had lapsed. You'll see that the buildings were final, those building permits were finalized in early, the first quarter of two thousand and six. You can see that tenant improvements were done for the area A, which is twenty-four hundred and fifty square feet. And also you'll see that they were replacing two air conditioning units and adding in that new one. And there were also other electrical improvements. All of these were within area A. Again, going back to the diagram here, you can see that outlined in green. There is a discrepancy of twelve square feet, but I think that's pretty much de minimis when it comes to where you measure inside of walls, outside of walls, and such. So the building permits that were issued did not relate to areas B or C. With respect to the existing uses and the definition of a restaurant use, that's where it starts to get a little bit murky, because the expansion areas did require a use permit, but they did not request a restaurant use for the deli, which was then being conducted in the retail area of the property. Today, if you read our development code, the deli would be considered a restaurant use. But again, that was not requested in two thousand and four. I believe staff thought that a deli was part of a regular retail use, even though today, and even then at the time, it was considered a restaurant. You can see the definition of restaurant here. I won't read it. But basically, it talks about the preparation of onsite for consumption of products on or off-site. Again, to recap, the Planning Commission unanimously approved the ability to convert or remodel the property as it was to retail, but did not approve or deny the request for expansion. As far as the project conditions of approval, there are only seven, which is unique in and of itself. But I wanted to highlight the language that talks about the maximum of nine tenant spaces are allowed within the structure. So that could occupy any of the areas A, B, and C, if you will, in the existing area before that little area of A was actually approved with a building permit. And I've now listed all of the seven conditions in case there was a concern or a question about those later on. They are provided in your staff report, but as you can see, there's a lot of history there and packaging. So the first condition is the one that I just talked about, where the eleven thousand two hundred and forty square feet can be remodeled to retail uses in A, B, and C. The second one is requiring requirements of a building permit. The third, fire department clearances. The next two, the next three actually talk about DRC approval for landscaping, signage, and the like. And the last condition of approval relates to getting other agency approvals and payment of fees. With respect to the parking that's required for the two thousand and four permit, you'll see in the staff report that based on historical uses and basically the outside seating area of eighty seats at the development code ratio of four, excuse me, one parking space for every four seats, you can see that twenty added to twenty-seven gives you the forty-seven required spaces based on the uses in the municipal code. However, if you divide the eleven thousand four hundred and twenty square feet, I apologize for the technical nature of this planning nerd stuff, but in our development code, you have a parking ratio of one to three hundred. So when you convert that, you'll see that there's a credit, if you will, because onsite parking cannot be provided around the plaza and a lot of our properties, you deal with this credit concept. You can see that with the ability to approve that use permit in two thousand and four, you're beginning with a deficit of nine spaces before you actually consider the concept of adding or expanding to the project. And that was the concern of the Planning Commission, as you read in the minutes, that they didn't want to add any uses in expansion in those four areas that I talked about, because it would increase this negative nine to a much greater number. And they wanted to have the ability to look at the city council's actions that were coming in the future. And as you can see here in my last bullet, that the use permit talks about eighty outdoor seats in the area that is not included in a calculation of square footage in the eleven thousand four hundred and twenty. It's just space that's allowed for seating. There is no discussion in the two thousand and four use permit staff report that recognizes any seats inside the facility. This is a recap of the use permits. You're aware of the two thousand and four use permit, because we're talking about it. Subsequent to that, ten years later, there was an application to approve a use permit that had some, a different number, a different design with respect to access to the Casa Grande area. There was analysis of. There was analysis of the Phase One project. They were talking about three phases, but the Phase One was approved with 103 seats. There is recognition from the applicant and staff through that process that 103 seats were there, with 60 basically being on the outside and 40 on the inside, and we can round that up if we need to. In 2015, the phases two and three of that discussion that occurred in 2014 were requested by the applicant to the Planning Commission. I do want to point out that they did request additional seating, and you may all recall that these were actually approved by the Planning Commission, but never exercised by the applicant. This information here is provided as historical data, so you can understand where staff was at with respect to the recognition of seats in the facility. Again, we're using the benchmark of 2004, but we have this additional information to inform us about use permits that came in a later date. And you can also recall that there was a 2018 application that was presented to the City Council, to the Planning Commission, and appealed to the City Council. But to recap here, you can see that there is a recommendation from staff of 103 seats in our packet for tonight, because it was recognized by staff and the Planning Commission in 2014, or at least, you can say it another way, it was not rejected or opposed by staff. There was general recognition that these numbers were there at the time in 2014. Oops. And then we also received a letter yesterday.
Sorry, can you just repeat that? The why, the why of the 103 seats?
Yes, in the, in the application that was approved, the first one, 10 years later, you'll see the application, the applicant, excuse me, provided in their narrative that there was existing at the time, and that use permit process basically blessed or anointed, probably, I don't know if that's the best word for it, but it recognized them and did not object to it, either in a motion or in the staff report. There was no really discussion about, hey, this is a problem. It was recognized that that was indeed a number that was accepted by staff as being present at the time. So, in the letter that we received today, the applicant has suggested that there should be 190 seats in the project, and it calculates that there should be 152. This is coincident with the staff report analysis of 2018, I believe, and also, they wanted to have 38 seats outside. Of course, you can see, wait a minute, if you rewind, they've already got the ability to do 80 seats on the outside in the 2004 use permit. So, there's obviously a recognition. The most salient point here I want to point out is that we have no knowledge of how many seats were inside the building in 2004. There's no record of it, and the staff analysis that was presented to the Planning Commission, only the recognition that there was 80 seats outdoors in the, in the area that we saw the deli seating and the barbecue seating, if you will.
I have a question. So, you're referencing the project description from 2014, the parking section where it acknowledges that those seats...
103, yes.
Okay. But is there anywhere else where it talks about restaurant seats in any of the permit papers or documents?
The applicant's lawyer sent a letter to the city that's in front of you tonight, came today. And in that letter, the applicant argues and sets forth calculations for seating that's in excess of 152 plus 38, 190 seats. 152 inside and 30 exterior seats. And that same sort of analysis was advanced in connection with the 2015 use permit by the applicant. However, in the 2014 use permit application, the applicant's representative, Michael Ross, who's a local architect, in his narrative states, "As a matter of record, the current Sonoma Cheese Factory restaurant seating count is indoor dining 41 seats, exterior dining 62 seats, for a total of 103." He then goes on to say, "This use permit application requests these 103 food service seats remain grandfathered, assigned to the property to be utilized as a basis for future development." And that concept of these grandfathered seats was picked up by staff and the Planning Commission when it approved the 2014 use permit application, meaning the commission, in essence, acknowledged that these seats were grandfathered, that somehow they had ripened into a prior rate. And the applicant then in 2015 came back to finish off, it was a three-phase use permit application in 1415. In 2015, the applicant came back to secure approvals for phases two and three. And in the staff report pertaining to that particular application, the then Planning Director recognized and acknowledged that in 2014, the commission had acknowledged the grandfathered status of these 103 seats. And the commission, however, went ahead and approved an additional amount of seats, but that was because a use permit had been submitted to apply for the additional number of seats. And that use permit, as you know, was approved by the commission. In fact, the commission, as I recall, in the conditions of approvals, acknowledges that potentially 201 seats might be available, but they were putting a cap on it at 180, 190, something like that. However, that use permit, as you know, expired. The point being is that, at least in 2015, the Planning Commission, the applicant and staff acknowledged that, at most, the amount of seats that were available to the applicant as grandfathered was 103, 60 out, 40 in.
I think part of what's very difficult about this is that although the original appeal was pending for a year, and this appeal's been pending for months and months, today we were presented with this 2014 document, which you're referencing now, which is quite involved, which none of us have read. And so, I just want to be clear that it is very difficult to process the information put before us, when you've given us a multi-page document, I don't know if the public has it or not, which was not part of our packet and was just left on the dais today. Perhaps we can take a break to read it at some point, if this is part of the record that you are trying to present to us for making decisions.
This was submitted in response to the letter we received today. So, I apologize for its late submittal. There are copies in the foyer for the public, there's 10 copies of this packet. It's in this packet where you'll find these acknowledgements of the seating capacity that responds to the calculations being advanced by the attorney for the applicant today. I do apologize for letting this. I think it's an important aspect of the record before you, that these documents be included. And they do, they do say the things I represent them as having...
Well, Taffana, I have no doubt that you are not accurately representing them, but since you have put before us, I don't know what it is, a 20-page document, which now you won't want to be part of the record. We're going to have to, at a minimum, take a break to read these documents, if they are responsive and are part of the record, which we can do at a later time, I suppose. But, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're almost halfway there, so I'll try to speed it up. So, the Planning Commission...
No, no one is asking you to rush. I actually have questions about prior...
No, okay.
There, I have questions about a variety of the things that have been discussed so far.
Then I will go through the balance of the slides and give them due attention. The Planning Commission then basically in February adopted a resolution that basically approved on a 4-1 vote, a determination that the use permit had indeed expired and was not vested. And they made four findings that are actually in the resolution. I've provided them right here on this next slide. Number one, they talked about the fact that the record establishes that the applicant did not submit timely building permit applications to establish multi-tenant spaces. And you may recall, I talked about, I showed you condition number one, that talked about the ability to have up to nine. The second finding of the Planning Commission was that although the applicant had submitted three building permits in area A, they were not to further the work that was issued by the permit to create multiple tenants on the site. The third finding being that the owner has not applied for any subsequent discretionary permits or approval related to the exterior, common areas, walkways, landscaping, anything related to show or further the plan that was submitted as part of the 2004 use permit. The last finding of the Planning Commission was that they had not established any other use other than that which was already there at the site, which was retail and a deli. In other words, the multiple tenants, and that concept should have established additional uses that were not already present. So, in our staff recommendation to address the issue of vesting, has that particular use permit been vested, or has it expired and been abandoned? We, as staff, have reviewed the materials and the record and determined that the use permit is vested, based on the issuance of those building permits, the three that I mentioned previously. The record also shows that we have somewhere between $200,000 to $300,000 worth of hard costs, based on the information that we have in the building permits related to those three permits, where they establish what the permit value is and the value of the improvements. And lastly, there, there is no intent to abandon the 2004 use permit by virtue of the submittal and actual finaling of those building permits. If you recall, they were in the, they were finalized in the first quarter of 2006. Were multiple tenant spaces required? There's, as I showed you earlier on the slide, there's no condition, they have to have anything, they cannot have anything greater than nine spaces, but they can have anywhere from one to nine spaces. And there was no requirement that they be done in any certain order or in any particular time period. The only limitation of that 2004 use permit was that they could not have more than nine tenant spaces, there was no minimum. So, the question then comes as to what can or cannot be done on the property today. So, again, we've established that nine tenants can be there in areas A, B, and C, and I'm happy to go back to the map if you want to see that again, and uses...
Just a question on the map.
Sure.
A, B, C, and then there's the front area...
Oh, there we go, yes.
That hits West Spain Street, is that a part of A?
Yes, well, for purpose of discussion, that we'll call that area A tonight, but it was the existing area. But when the use permit was approved, and then when it was later then built out, the green area was the 2,450 square feet, and the purple area to the left towards Spain, that was all used as a deli, for the retail deli. And then the office space has not changed, I believe, since the building was open. I don't believe there's been any public exposure up there for any kind of use, other than office space. So, going back to what can be done on the property today, uses within area A and the area fronting on Spain Street, they can be used to, for any use that conforms with the development code, whether it's a principal permitted use, or if they choose to come in and ask for a use permit at the Planning Commission, they can do those too. Use permits are allowed in the development code, in the commercial zoning district. With respect to the deli and/or restaurant expansion, that, again, wouldn't be allowed to have, to happen, but not without a use permit by the Planning Commission. 103 seats would be our recommendation to council for the existing deli and outdoor area, with the combination that was recognized, as Jeff said, with the 2014, 2015 use permit. That would have 62 in the outdoor area and 41 on the indoors. Again, no expansion of the deli or the barbecue area in the outdoor area without a new use permit being issued by the Planning Commission. With respect to the type of retail, restaurant uses are limited to area A, or the area going towards Spain Street, and we would allow up to a maximum of 5,300 and change square footage. And again, if there's any additional area or restaurant being relocated elsewhere in the deli, for example, that would require a subsequent use permit. I've also mentioned again that retail can go in any area today, A, B, or C, and again, those uses that are allowed, and there's a list of those uses that are allowed in your attachments. Again, this is for food and beverage retail, which are prepared for off-site, as opposed to food and beverage that are prepared onsite, such as a deli.
And, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And that concludes our presentation this evening. We're ready for questions, should you have some?
I have a question. So, in the letter today from Alicia Guerra, attorney for the trustee, the Viviani Trust trustee, she asserts that provided the public market stays within the 5,310 square feet of deli/restaurant uses, those uses are allowed anywhere within the 11,400 square feet of designated retail shopping mall space, so, and allowed under the use permit. So, given that you have said it is not, and they have asserted that it is, is it correct that we cannot add any conditions of approval, we're either saying it's valid or not?
Let me try to respond to that. There are evidences on both sides of the particular issue of whether or not the 5,310 square feet must remain in area A, which is the old area A depicting the 2004 site plan, and the area that is between area A and Spain Street. We're calling that area A for purposes tonight, because when you add those two areas together, it comes to 5,310 square feet, roughly. It's clear that, from the record, that when the owners applied in 2004 for the use permit, they talked about expanding the deli and retail uses in the front of the building into the area A. They were going to wipe out the wall that existed between the two, because area A at that time was being used for cheese manufacturing. And they were going to extend the deli area into that new area A. That was their, that was their short-term goal. So, it could, it's arguable, I think, that if that was a short-term goal, and they applied for a permit in, timely, they timely applied for a permit to wipe out that, that wall and extend the deli into the area A, and they did that within a year or two, that that is the vested right that they have at the present time. On the other hand, as David Storey has mentioned, the use permit doesn't require that any particular one of these nine tenants or any particular use be established first, second, third, fourth, or fifth, or in any particular order, meaning they had to start somewhere. And it's arguable that they started here, that they picked this area A to convert into a restaurant or deli use, but they didn't have to start there, but they did. Does that mean then that they are forever frozen in the use and location of that 5,310 square feet for deli/retail use? I think there's an argument that they are not.
Well, I'm just looking at the staff report. So, the question said, what type of retail? Restaurant uses are limited to area A, is the staff report we just received.
That's exactly right.
So, is that incorrect?
That's not incorrect. It's a, an appropriate interpretation of the facts. I think these facts...
So, we have competing, we have competing positions.
I think there are competing positions, and the council can choose either one, which it chooses, which is to choose.
And what will happen if the, how, since there cannot be new conditions of approval, how would those, how would that decision manifest itself? If they say, well, we disagree with you, so we're going to build it anyway? How, how would we enforce our disagreement about interpretation?
The resolution that the staff contemplates this council ultimately approving, there's not one before you tonight, because we're not sure what the council will decide, but assuming the council decides that the rights are vested, we are going to actually include which rights are vested, the most salient, important rights. So, one right that would be described is the number of retail delicatessen, the number of square foot that can be devoted to delicatessen or restaurant use, which is 5,310. The number of seats, what else are we going to do? It's important.
The seats can be located.
Yeah, where the seats can be located. What else? That may be the, some total of the resolution's effect, but it would say something to the effect that the use is allowed under the existing 2004 use permit for up to nine tenant spaces, a deli/restaurant use up to a maximum of 5,310 square feet plus outdoor dining area, and that there would be a number of seats that would be permitted inside and outside, and that any uses that are allowed in the development code without permit would also be permitted in the entirety of this structure.
So, there is not contemplated language around the question of where the food can be located in this? So, in terms of the disagreement between the staff report we just received and the letter from council, that is not anticipated to be addressed?
No, we would address that too. The council tells us how to address that. And if they, if they disagreed and then began relocating or locating some of the restaurant use in other places, let's assume you chose area A, that would be up to the city to enforce that, through an enforcement code, enforcement action.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Huntley?
So, can we go over one more time how we got from 2,800 square feet to 5,300 square feet for the deli use?
The 2,860 and the 2,462.
Well, I just know, we started with the 2860, and then ended up with a number of 5,310. So, how does that happen?
Yeah, the 2,462 was manifest later in the building permit, the first one, the 17302, that was 2,450. So, when you add those two numbers, that's where you get the 5,310.
And so, that's based on what the building permit was?
Yes.
But not based on anything that came out of the use permit?
Correct, yeah. This diagram that you have right here is what was submitted, without my handwriting on it, and the narrative shows 2,462. When you add the 2,860, the 2,462, the 1654, the 3116, and the 356 for the restrooms, and the 972, that comes up to the 11,000... that comes up to the eleven thousand, eleven thousand, excuse me, my numbers mixed up now. That's the fourteen thousand two hundred, sorry, doing this from memory. So it's the fourteen thousand two hundred. When you add the twenty-eight sixty and twenty-four fifty, that's where you get the fifty-three ten.
The 2004 use permit was granted, was requested for, and was approved to allow all of this structure to be used for restaurant and/or retail use.
Well, where do you see that it was requested to be used for restaurants?
The staff report refers to it as a deli-
Well, what I'm seeing in the actual, like, original 2004 documents, I know that they're being interpreted one way, but I, all I see is retail slash deli, which doesn't seem like it actually exists, it's just retail with the non-conforming use, but-
Well, we acknowledge in the staff report that there was some imprecision in the description of what it was that was being sought. We don't have a deli use defined in the zoning code, not then and not now, but a deli operation, whatever title you affix to it certainly falls within the definition of restaurant that's found in our zoning code. So that's where we come up with the notion, they were applying for a restaurant, they were, they were applying to be able to use the property for, they wanted to expand the delicatessen operation in the front of the building to the balance of the building in some fashion. And that was approved. They actually implemented that approval by getting a building permit for area A, and expanded the deli into area A in 2005 and 2006.
Well, I'm just wondering, where in the, like, 2004 documents themselves are these things?
If you take a look at the staff report, the very front page-
Jeff, page two actually has of the staff report for that particular attachment, has a description, again, I apologize, I mentioned the wrong number, so eleven thousand four hundred and twenty square feet, you'll see, wherever it talks about reuse of existing space.
I'm not sure where you are in the report, sorry.
We're looking at two different places in the same report. There's a cover sheet of the staff report, it says the gen item number five, meeting date five thirteen oh four in the upper right-hand corner.
Is there a page number?
Page number two, at least, the one that I'm looking at. As far as the attachments, if you can just take a minute.
Okay, yeah, I'd rather look at the actual 2004 documents in the staff report.
Sure. So the staff report begins with a, the format, it has little boxes in the upper right, upper portion of it, and in the middle, under project summary, it describes site characteristics. The property is currently developed with a number of buildings dating from nineteen forty to the present, accommodating cheese production and a retail slash deli and outdoor eating area.
So are you looking now at the-
Can we just have a page numbers? What page are you looking at?
One hundred and eighteen, oh, excuse me.
So the staff report for 2004 starts on page sixteen of that attachment, one sixteen of the overall item.
Page number one hundred and thirty-two of two fifty-six.
One three two.
One hundred and thirty-two of two hundred and fifty-six. That's the cover page that Jeff's talking about.
So I think the printed-out copy is different than the iPad version.
Just a second, let me find it on the iPad so we can help you find the page.
This is the May thirteenth, 2004 staff report.
This is this page.
Yes.
Yes. It's page sixteen of the attachment and page one hundred and fifteen of the item on iPad.
Page sixteen of the, of the Cheese Factory pill packet, so it's page sixteen of one one five in your iPads.
I feel that this item is the most numbers that have ever been said out loud in the history of the council meetings.
And so the second page, excuse me, the page after that, talks about the, the title there, it says, detailed project description, if you look at the paragraph that says, begins reuse of existing space, that's where we get the narrative, Councilmember Hunley, regarding the eleven thousand four hundred and twenty square feet, the twenty-eight sixty devoted to retail use, which, again, I pointed out, that's also the deli, under the interpretation that was taken at the time. And then you can see later on, as you go into the new construction, that's where they wanted to add the eighty-four eighty of net new building space.
And on that, the page that David was just reading from, which is the second, what page is that from, on your iPad, I don't know.
Hundred and, was it sixteen? So be seventeen.
Page seventeen, under reuse of existing space, that paragraph, as he said, at this time, however, only two thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet is devoted to retail use. We know that's not technically true, it was also being devoted to deli use. So David basically used retail and deli sort of interchangeably here.
Can I ask you a question? We've got a map here in front of us, right? Why is there a purple section of the map?
That, that shows the current use at the time that they were describing as being retail.
So I'm just confused, because it seems like, just walking into the building right now, and the way that it exists right now, and the way it's historically existed, that front area was where, has always been where the deli is. And then you have the two thousand four hundred and sixty-two square feet behind that, which is where now there's, like, gelato, and like, that's about it, there's some cheese for sale, and there's the registers where you pay. It seems like in two thousand, I don't know when, this must have been when this back part was opened up, but it just seems like that purple section is highlighted, because that's where the deli is, that's where the restaurant use is, and this back section is not where the restaurant is.
Well, David did the coloring.
Right, no, I, I get that, but I think that there's, like, there's a differentiation. Right now, you're saying that these two areas are part of the same whole, right? These, the front area, the two eighty sixty, and, and the back area, the twenty-four sixty-two are together, and that they've always been together, at least since this 2004 permit was passed. And I don't, I mean, here in, in the thing, it says, at the time, however, only two thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet is devoted to retail use. The property owner is proposing to devote their entire building to retail use, subdivided as many as nine tenant spaces, a retail outlet deli for the cheese factory would serve as the, the anchor tenant. So it's, this whole process has been so confusing, it seems like, I mean, one interpretation would be that the anchor tenant is that retail deli that's the front, two thousand eight hundred and sixty. Another interpretation would be that the retail use being approved for the whole thing, for some reason, we were interpreting deli at retail that time, but then why, if we're interpreting it that way, why doesn't it extend across the whole property? Why is it just these two? Because they said the whole thing, right? So why are we saying five, five eighty and not eleven thousand? If that's, if that's what we're arguing, then why are we not saying eleven thousand?
We're saying five thousand three hundred and ten, because that is the portion of the structure that they applied for a building permit to expand the deli into, and that is the amount of space they then vested-
What year did that happen?
Two thousand four, five, six, two thousand five and six. And the applicant has no basic disagreement with the limit of five thousand three hundred and ten square feet as being their vested rights to use this property as a restaurant. They're not disputing that.
Okay. I mean, but this says retail, it doesn't say restaurant.
Well, what says retail?
That 2004 permit. It says, the, the, the property owner is proposing to devote the entire building to retail use.
It says it at page-
And we know, though, we know that staff interchange the word retail with deli and consider them essentially the same.
Well, at page one hundred and forty-five-
Did they interchange restaurant with deli?
There it is.
And use them essentially the same?
Well, it just says, here at page one forty-five of the staff report from that time, it says, the owner now proposes to develop the property as a retail shopping mall, a retail shopping mall, that doesn't sound like a restaurant, with an expanded cheese factory retail area as the theme and anchor store, which is late, was previously described as a deli, and the balance of the existing space offered for lease on a design-build basis. It's a mall, shopping mall. The food court that we have today, the Oxbow, the Ferry Building, it didn't even exist in 2004, that wasn't something that was common.
There were food courts in, in shopping centers.
In shopping malls, but the idea of an Oxbow-style market didn't exist in 2004.
But a food court did, and maybe that was what they were considering at that time.
I mean, that's, this says a retail shopping mall is the purpose.
But it's, like, literally always had, like, cheese for sale as one of the primary uses, as retail, and that's, like, just straight-up retail, that's not restaurant use. And then they added the deli, and then they-
At any rate, are there other questions?
Yeah, have there been any definition, changes in the definition of retail since 2004?
Not since the code in 2002, so you had two years of the new Development Code before this application came before the Planning Commission. What I have difficulty understanding is how the deli was considered to be retail, because a use permit was required for restaurant uses, and a use permit for a restaurant was not applied for, or granted in 2004.
Definitely. And I, well, I've just, not to beat a dead horse, but just as far as, I understand that the building permit, so we're saying that because they're saying they want to expand the retail use, and at the time, they were using, I guess, retail and deli interchangeably, then we're just assuming that they were saying deli every time they said retail, and that's why we can expand it to fifty-three hundred feet?
Yeah, I have to agree with that, because at a later time, in the 2014 and even in the eighteen, staff does then separate the difference between retail and restaurant, and there have been applications by the property owners for, to establish restaurant uses on the property. And so somebody subsequently made that definition, or perhaps they read the Development Code.
Well, would it be, I know the way they described it was crazy, but it doesn't make any sense, but like, wouldn't that be a retail use permit with a non-conforming use on the property? Since there is no restaurant use permit?
I, I don't know, I don't know. The, the record is, is just not clear on, on that issue, you know? If you take a look at the proposal submitted by Mr. Dimick, who's the architect at the time, he talks about the retail sales area that includes a deli-type sandwich operation with outdoor patio eating area. At the bottom of his page, I'm not sure what page it is.
What man, what's next?
The pagination is problematic. I'm looking at the proposal statement, the two, the 2004 application.
Is there a page number? It's at the bottom right-hand side of your packet.
Page twenty.
Page twenty-eight. Is there another, is there a paper number?
Yeah, let me find it. Go ahead. So page twenty-eight of the iPad, and page one forty-four of the printed packet, thank you.
Are we still looking?
So at the very top of that page, the proponent, the proponent describes the historical uses as a facility and retail sales area that includes a deli-type sandwich operation with outdoor patio area. At the bottom of that same page, the penultimate sentence says, the ultimate decision has been to relocate the cheesemaking, storage, packing, and shipping operation to a newly constructed facility on Eighth Street East at Feinberg, and maintain the existing sales and deli operation in its current location. So there certainly was an intent on their part to continue use of the property for delicatessen purposes.
I, I'm not, I'm not- I'm not sure that's the question. Councilmember Agarmani?
Traditionally, Mr. Store, you've been in this business a long time, do you see those words as interchangeable, retail and?
No, clearly, retail, like, selling t-shirts and the like, mugs, and, but when you get to food, it's a restaurant, it's like a Subway sandwich place to me, and that's a restaurant, because that's similar to a deli.
So I have a question about this item, it's on page one forty-six of the printed packet. It's a submittal by William Dimick, and it says, in the last paragraph, the proposed project presents a less intense use of the property. I guess I'm wondering if having a two-hundred-seat restaurant would meet that criteria? I mean, aren't restaurants high-intensity uses?
Yeah, and that was the trouble that we had, and also what the Planning Commission had a problem with in the expansion. Recall that I mentioned the negative nine credit, if you will, it's a debit. They were concerned about adding one parking space for every three hundred square feet for the eighty-four sixty square feet that was being requested in the expansion, so parking was the issue. And then it comes to the question now of, well, all of the uses around the plaza can't provide any off-site parking, so it's just a matter of how much of a credit you give in, in the theoretical discussion. Again, my, my experience is that retail should rarely be in the range of one parking space for every two hundred square feet of retail. Your Development Code is very generous, but to your question, Mayor Harrington, restaurant just blows out your parking way much more than a retail use.
So I guess I'm, since we're divining what the meaning of these words were, it seems straightforward to me, or at least, or maybe it's, you know, helpful evidence about what the meaning would be, that they said the use would be less intense with regard to the, you know, fungibility of retail and restaurant. Anyway.
And I wanted to ask, does everyone understand, because I thought there was a confusion, the ultimate decision has been to relocate the cheesemaking, storage, packing, and shipping operation to a newly constructed facility on A Street East in Feinberg, and maintain the existing sales and deli operation in its current location, that would be on West Ne, West Spain.
Well, I guess it just, does it mean its current location, where it is physically located inside the cheese factory, or does it mean its current location, the cheese factory? What does that mean? I mean, the problem with dealing with such an old permit, and none of the original participants being present, is that we don't know what this means.
Well, and then the last sentence, at the present time, the new production plant, meaning that out on A Street East, is nearing completion and all cheesemaking equipment. Well, I, I think when it says at the, in its current location feels and sounds to me that they're talking about West Spain.
It may have been, I think, well, one thing to think about is, you had a manufacturing business in your downtown, right? So it may, they may have been considering that when you're moving the manufacturing business out to Eighth Street East, then that is kind of creating that less intense work. I mean, manufacturing, if you've got trucks coming, that kind of thing, that can be an intense use too. So it may have been speaking more to the manufacturing side again, you know, the folks that wrote this and the folks that did this are not sitting here, so there is some review and interpretation.
I have a question about the slide, page six of the slides that goes over the building So just, the permits were supposed to be pulled by May twenty-ninth, 2005, so why is permit seventeen three oh two and seventeen one sixty-nine, why are they relevant, after that time?
We just wanted to show that there was an intent not to abandon the project or the property when it came to vested rights, so the one that really establishes the vested right would be the first one, seventeen oh thirty-four. At the Planning Commission, there was a great discussion about the, the extent of permit seventeen three oh two and seventeen one sixty-nine relative to where those improvements were being provided, and that would be within area A. And if I could just circle back to Kathy's comment and your question, Mayor Harrington, my, my read of the intense thing would be not from a parking, from what Kathy described, from a parking perspective, manufacturing and storage space, they park much less than a retail use, and so it's clearly not for that reason, because you're taking a manufacturing project out to the Eighth Street where the demand for parking would be in the one to five hundred or one to a thousand compared to one to two hundred for retail, so it would not be more intense than that, for sure.
And I might add on to the issue of the building permits. The, the first building permit that was pulled shows the, for the part of the applicant to build out area A, and to allow the expansion of the retail and the deli use from the front of the building into that area. The other two, although they came later, in our view, my view, show reliance on the initial use permit in 2004. And in reliance on that use permit being issued, the developer has incurred additional costs and expenses to improve the property to allow for its use as a tenant, for, as a, as a tenant use. I think one of the confusing aspects of this is that there is, I think, an underlying belief that if you don't effect building improvements that will assist a multiple of tenants, then that particular work does not go into the calculation as to whether there was reliance on the use permit and the issuance of the building permit and building out that building permit work. That's not true here, because it was okay under the use permit to have only one tenant. Thus, in essence, any, any building permit that assisted even a single tenant and its occupancy- in our view, is in furtherance of the two thousand and four use permit.
If they did nothing, would the use permit have been exercised?
No.
Why not? They have one tenant.
If they did nothing, meaning if they pulled no permits?
Right. Yeah. Let's say they changed the signage and they moved the chairs around. Is that enough?
No. There has to be substantial incurring of, of hard costs, and that would not have reached the level of substantial incurring of hard costs.
And how much was incurred with regard to the seventeen-oh-three-four?
Oh, it's in the staff report.
There was about a hundred and sixty thousand on that particular component. The rest, the AC units are taken up to the balance of between two hundred and three hundred thousand. But the majority of a hundred and sixty, I think it's a hundred and sixty-seven or a hundred and seventy, somewhere in that region.
Do we?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Do we know what year they added the gelato and coffee bar?
I don't know.
And that, that was not, so this two, two thousand four hundred and fifty square feet under building permit seventeen-oh-three-four, that, what section of the building was that? Was that work done on?
That was done in the green area, Area A.
So can I, I mean, does anybody know when they added the gelato and things like that?
Probably, probably.
Can I, can I do that?
You can ask any person who speaks once they come up.
I was going to ask members of the audience, if you want to have a discussion, can you please go in the other room? Thanks.
So, I mean, that's, that's my question. I mean, things, things that I see here too is that we propose to develop the property into a retail shopping mall with an expanded cheese factory retail area. And, I mean, I guess the way that we kind of are interpreting cheese fact, that the cheese factory retail area is this deli space, which is weird and horribly written and very confusing. I would really like to know when they expanded to the back area. And then the question, my current discussions with a lot of people, I'm very confused over what a restaurant is and what is not a restaurant. Like, if I have cupcakes and I have boxes to put them into, and you ask for two cupcakes in a box, am I doing restaurant services? If I scoop ice cream and put it into a cup and give it to you, is that a restaurant, or is that retail?
I'm not quite sure how to answer that, other than that the, the definition that we have is that for food, food products, thank you Kathy, shows that they have to be prepared on-site. So if you got, if you're making your cupcakes and making your ice cream on-site, that would be a restaurant. But if you're bringing in prepackaged stuff and selling it, that would not be a restaurant.
So, I mean, I guess what this leads to is, is my question is like, so if, if ice cream and candy is a restaurant, then when they move that area into the, the green area, when they moved out into that green area, they opened up restaurants in there, effectively. And if that's retail, then they never moved restaurants into there, and that area has never been a part of the deli restaurant.
And that's, that's why we have the conundrum of trying to figure out how deli got subsumed into retail.
I think that this is a great example of why trying to determine whether a two thousand and four use permit is so difficult. It's very difficult. Anyway, Councilmember Hunley?
Couple more questions. One, can you explain to me again how we went from eighty to a hundred and three seats?
Yeah, I'll do my best.
Please.
There you go. The use permit here, when staff prepared the staff report, you'll see that. Would you like me to kind of show that to you? This page right here.
Okay, so printed page one thirty-five. And let me s- And iPad page nineteen.
So you'll see there that staff in its analysis provided with the only piece of information relating to seating inside or outside. So the question is, does the absence of a discussion of indoor seating mean that there was no seating? And so the question then is, is that we're informed that in that paragraph where it says parking, and this is the penultimate sentence, says, "In conjunction with the twenty additional spaces required for the outdoor dining area," and that's where we have the parenthesis of eighty seats. You simply do the math, and that's one parking space. Excuse me, yeah, one parking space for every four seat, seats. And so that's where you get the twenty spaces from, and that is in our development code. So when you add that to the the credit, you need forty-eight spaces, and then we've done the historical calculation of the forty-seven, and that comes from the twenty-seven plus the twenty that I just spoke about, and that's how you get to the nine spaces being in deficit. Does that answer it?
I mean, that makes sense. I don't know, but.
I, I can only read what's, what's given.
No, no, that, no, I just wanted to know where the number came from, so that's helpful.
The assumption on staff's part today is that there are no indoor seats, which I don't believe is the case.
My other question is about the definition of a shopping center, and so I've noticed that the definition is that means primarily retail commercial sites with three or more separate businesses sharing common pedestrian parking areas. If we're talking about shopping centers here, does this mean that it has to have three or more separate businesses to in fact be a shopping center?
Yes, because as I mentioned earlier, your development code says for three. So what happens when you have one tenant or two tenants? They would not have come in for a use permit for one or two, but because they wanted to make it multi, and the limit was nine, they had to get a use permit for that purpose.
And so the thought is that even though there wasn't three or more at the time, that there was efforts made moving towards the direction of having three or more separate businesses under the permit?
And the difficulty in the site plan, I'm trying to remember where that is now, hang on. Oh, there we go. It was difficult for, for staff, as we were discussing this with the planning commission, and this is where I think the planning commission got hung up, was where's the central corridor? Where's the walkway for pedestrians? And that was part of the basis of their findings, that they couldn't establish where those multiple tenants come in with respect to the, the park, the walkway. The applicant did provide some information, but we couldn't corroborate that in our records.
Are there additional questions? I just have a quick question. This is on page one seventy-one of the paper packet about the cost of the improvements. I'm looking at, above the bullet points, it says, "The estimated project cost was listed as seventy thousand, and the permit valuations was one hundred and sixty-one, three fifty-seven." Can you just explain the difference between the project cost and the permit valuation?
Just a second, Mayor Harrington, before I do, is that going to help folks that are sitting with their iPads? So that's page fifty-five on, on your iPads. This is the letter from Alicia Guerrero, dated November sixteenth, twenty eighteen, so we can all get on the same page.
Thank you very much. Helpful. It says, "The estimated project cost was listed as seventy thousand and permit valuation was one sixty-one, three fifty-seven." I'm just wondering, what's the difference between project cost and permit valuation?
So when an applicant submits for a building permit, we ask them what they think the projects are going to cost them. And from that, we then base the value, the cost of the permit that they then pull, but whether that is indeed the actual cost that it comes out to be. There's that period of time from the time that they ask, prices go up and the like. That was what was reported to the city on seventeen-three-oh-two, I believe.
Okay, so the information we have from the owners was that they were going to spend seventy thousand dollars, and did we have any additional information that it was more or less than that?
No, other than what they provided in the record.
Okay, so in terms of the hundred and sixty thousand dollars being invested, that's a city estimate, but with regard to what the owner said, it was seventy thousand, and we never heard other than that?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Wait, wait, that's not quite correct. Let's take a look at
Well, it's detailed, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Guerrero's May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen letter.
What, what page are you on? And also what iPad page is it? Please, thank you. Please and thank you.
Her May twentieth, two thousand and eighteen letter, nineteen letter, and Exhibit A.
I'm sorry, where?
May twenty, two thousand and nineteen.
While, while you're looking for that, there's also something I just want to add to your question. In attachment number five, paper page one sixty-six of two fifty-six, it says.
Wait, please, one second.
This would be the building permit for number seventeen-oh-three-four.
One sixty-six, and do we have an iPad page?
One sixty-six, and the iPad page is.
Fifty, page fifty on the iPad, page one sixty-six, paper packet. Attachment five.
So if you're there, I would like to point your attention to, this is information that's completed by Mr. Dimick when he is applying for a building permit. You can see that he estimates that the project valuation is seventy thousand dollars, and this is where you see the.
I don't, I don't, actually don't see that. Oh, at the top right, okay.
Top right-hand corner, I'm sorry. About an inch below.
Yeah.
Okay. And you'll also see that there's twenty-four fifty square feet, and that's where, again, where we have that little twelve-square-foot problem. Then you see about two-thirds of the way down, again, you see permit valuation. This would be what it costs that the, the city then bases its building permit fee of three thousand dollars and eighty-eight. It's all based on a percentage of what the permit valuation is, not what an applicant discloses as to us, what the cost of the improvements, the valuation of the project is going to be. We have no idea what that's going to be, but based on what they're requesting in their building permit, that's how we establish the three thousand dollar fee. Again, based on the permit valuation of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Right. The permit valuation is determined by the city, and the app, I mean, just to confirm, the estimated value is provided by the owner, and then the city makes their, a different valuation, which is one sixty-one. But that's the meaning of those two numbers? That was the question.
Okay, Jeff, you wanted the May twentieth dates? So let me tell you, so now we're going to look at the May twentieth letter from Alicia Guerrero, and it is in your printed packet, page two oh-two, and in your iPad packet, it is eighty-six. So this is a May twentieth letter from the applicant's attorney.
If you've got there, please turn three pages later to Exhibit A.
And what are we looking at?
And the next page of Exhibit A states that the cost.
So just, Jeff, just one second. So this is page eighty-nine of the iPad packet, and page two oh-five of the printed packet.
But Exhibit A is created by council for the trust?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And council for the trust represents that the cost of the building permits was one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two-two-five. I also note for Vice Mayor Harvey's edification that describes in that same paragraph where the hundred and seventy-four thousand, two-two-five features in the heading, the last line says, "Use, gelato and coffee bar started after the remodel in two thousand and six pursuant to the two thousand and four use permit."
I guess I just wonder if this is all, is, this is, multiple permits or one, because it has the HVAC listed here, but that's what's shown under the July eleventh permit, not the one that was taken out during the period before the use permit would have expired. But anyway, it's helpful to look at. Are there any other council questions? I would like to take a three-minute break before we open public comment. So let's do that.
Jeff, I have a question for you and David.
We can get everybody back here. We can reconvene. All right, we can get back to this. I want to thank everybody in the audience and everybody watching for sitting through this. There are a lot of details in connection with this matter, and we are trying to be as thorough as possible and ask all of our questions, and I know it's a lot to listen to, and I appreciate that. And so I just wanted to acknowledge this is highly detailed, and we're just trying to make sure that we fully understand everything before we discuss the matter. So I appreciate. So, I appreciate everyone's patience. Are there any other City Council questions? No, I will open it up for public comment.
Mayor Harrington, members of the City Council, my name is Alicia Garrett, and I'm an attorney with Buckholzer. I'm the one who keeps writing all these letters that you keep referring to this evening on behalf of the Viviani Trust. The, as you know, the Viviani Trust owns the Sonoma Cheese Factory and the parcels located it to West Bain Street. I filed the appeal on March 12, 2019, of the Planning Commission determination that the 2004 use permit apparently, in their minds, was not in effect, notwithstanding the fact that the Sonoma Cheese Factory's been occupying that space for 15 years. And so, I have submitted comments this morning thanking you and staff very much for reconfirming that, in fact, the 2004 use permit has been in effect for 15 years. Good to know, considering the space has been occupied. But we did have a couple of questions to clarify related to the seat count and the location of the restaurant use within the space. Before I even get into those comments, in case you have any questions, I do want to show you a stack of receipts from the first building permit from 2005, 2006, related to the $174,000. It's itemized. If you question the numbers, it's here. These are, it's done the old-fashioned way.
You could provide those to the city clerk, she can share them with us.
Okay. I will do that after I make my comments here. Second thing I'd like to point you to is the many Exhibit As we've continued to submit since the Planning Commission decision, outlining every single use that has occupied the space within the cheese factory. Now, when that 2004 use permit was issued, it was for the entire 11,000-plus square feet. It wasn't just for a specific area. Our list of uses goes through and identifies where all the deli, food service-type uses occurred within the retail space. And as I would remind you, there was never anything in the 2004 use permit that said that deli, food service uses have to be located only in a specific location, 2,000-square feet or otherwise. Also, with respect to the purple area on Mr. Store's slide presentation, that's actually the outdoor seating area. It's not in the building. So, let's focus on the building and not get confused by the outdoor seating area. So, with respect to the parking spaces, all of those, all of the seating spaces were based on spaces that were in effect, grandfathered pre-2004. So, we counted those, plus the spaces granted through the 2004 use permit. That's how we got to our numbers. And then separately, with respect to the deli use and the location of restaurant uses, we did identify the fact that, at the time the 2004 use permit was granted, it was granted for an entire shopping center, shopping mall, that contemplated moving retail, restaurant uses, deli uses, much like the uses described in Exhibit A with gelato and deli and bakery. It's kind of like your today, present-day Italy concept, where it's an open-air market. And it wasn't identified specifically where things had to be located. And in fact, if you look at that 2004 use permit with its seven conditions, at no time did it say exactly how many seats had to occur, or where the deli and food service restaurant use is meant to occur. So as a result, since 2004, and with respect to the grandfathered uses, those uses have been on the property for 15 years, and even beyond that. So, if anybody wants to discuss kind of why we're here, it's really just to confirm that what the Viviani family, what Maria and Nina have been doing, and the Viviani Trust has been doing, they can continue to do so that they can move forward and complete the renovations that Mr. Viviani envisioned for the, for the space, for this public market. And so, that's why we're here this evening. And I, I'm sorry that it's gotten so complicated, because it's not really a complicated issue. It's a 2004 use permit for nine tenant stalls for an 11,140-plus-square-foot building. And that's all we wanted to confirm. With all respect to you, we just wanted confirmation that they can continue to do what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I think council may have some questions.
What you might want to do would be either ask some questions now, or hear the rest of public comment, because there may be other questions that come back, and then ask the applicant to come back up and kind of have a variety of questions that you might ask.
It's my preference to just ask now, if you don't mind. So, I guess my first question is, because it was sort of unusual that you had a pending application, and then a second application came forward while that was pending. When did you first learn that the 2004 use permit existed?
Well, my client has been doing a lot of due diligence for, ever since they've been trying to renovate the space.
And by your client, do you mean the trustee or the Vivianis?
The trustee. So, Maria Viviani, and Nina Rispicio, and the trustee.
Oh, okay. You represent all of those people.
Yeah. We're all working together to try to move forward. In the meantime, the trust had looked at options with a potential developer to try to kind of revitalize the space. And that was really the genesis of the 2017 use permit application. And since that time, they've been trying to find all the files, and have been going through and reviewing all the building plans, and et cetera. And that was through that process, they found the 2004 use permit.
So, prior to 2018, the trustee was not aware of the 2004 use permit?
They were, they were aware, yes.
Oh, when did they become aware of it? When, what does that mean?
Yeah, I mean, they, they have been working at the cheese factory for, since 2000, I mean, since before that. I mean, they've been working with Mr. Viviani. Whether or not they specifically remembered what day they found that specific use permit, but it's in the files, and they've all the building plans and everything related to that.
Okay. And then my second question is, with regard to the plan for the cheese factory, is the plan to have an Oxbow-style market with various food vendors in the nine stalls? What is the plan?
Well, that's a good question. We would like confirmation this evening that the 2004 use permit's still in effect, and then we'll know that we can build out the nine stalls. And, you know, if we get a different answer, that's not what we understand to be the case with respect to the vested rights, then we're going to have to rethink this. But the idea is to live, to, to build out Mr. Viviani's dream for the cheese factory.
But what, so there is...
I can't tell you, because there isn't, there isn't a pending application for doing anything at this point, other than there's an existing use permit that contemplated 2000, that contemplated the up to nine tenant stalls, based on Mr. Dimick's master site plan. And that's, that, that's what they just want to complete for building the improvements.
But the type of tenant and the plan for the space, there's no plan? Is that correct?
That's correct at this time. Because we're here, we're here to confirm that they can actually move forward.
Move forward with what, just building it out?
Building it out, with building plans. We were advised by the city earlier this year, we needed to get confirmation that the use permit was still in effect.
Oh, okay.
Because people were confused by the prior application, was, which was an attempt to try to do something that obviously there were members of the community who had some concerns about. So rather than go down that path, spend money on something that probably wasn't going to fly, or, you know, be acceptable to certain members of the community, the trust and the Viviani family went back, looked at what Mr. Viviani's plan was, and tried to figure out, okay, what do we need to do? But in conversations with staff, can we file building plans to move forward? It was, you need to confirm that this use permit's still in effect.
I see.
And that's what we did.
Okay, that's helpful. So my final question is, I just want to clarify your position from your letter today. Is it your position that if there were additional restaurants added to the cheese factory, you would not need a new use permit? You would not need an additional use permit? Is that your position?
My understanding is that there are at least 5,310 square feet approved for deli, food service-type uses within the existing use permit. I kind of, I mean, I technically question that, to me, the 11,140-plus-square-feet use permit allowed restaurant uses anywhere. But I understand, and as Mr. Walter indicated, we're not questioning the staff's interpretation as to the amount of deli, food service-type uses. And so, with that understanding, and based on what was grandfathered on the site, and based on what has continued to occupy the space in the building, I'm not talking about the purple area, we can make it work under that 5,310 square feet.
You can make it work. So the question was, do you think you need a new use permit if you add a restaurant?
Outside of that 5,000, 5,310 square feet.
Inside the 5,300, if additional restaurants are added, is it your position that you do not need a use permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Inside the 5,300.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I just want to understand what we're talking about.
Yes, we have a vested right to 5,300 square feet of food service, food, deli, restaurant, bakery, gelato, coffee, you name it, on that Exhibit A list.
Okay. I understand, I understand your position. Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey, did you have a question?
So just point of clarification, when I referred to the purple area, it's, my wife always tells me I'm terrible at naming colors. It's the part that's adjacent to the green, where the deli is. For some reason, maybe it's more pink, or like a fuchsia?
Fuchsia.
Okay?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the purple area. I kept saying that.
No, I understood, yeah, yeah. No, I get, I get the confusion. It's my fault, I'm bad at naming colors. It's just, that's just a reality of me. And we'll all have to deal with it.
Thank you, I thought it was me confused about... I kept looking at that building, saying, I know that's where the patio is, but...
So it would be the position of the Viviani Trust that nine restaurants could move into that 5,100-square-foot area without a use permit? Because you get nine tenants, right? And then that whole area allows restaurants.
Yeah, but I don't know that anybody's thinking there would be nine food service-type uses in that area. Of the nine tenants, there could be, I don't know how ma, I'm, I'm not a restaurant...
But it could be three, or five, or six.
Yes. It could be a deli, just kind of like they have now, deli, gelato, espresso area, and maybe, you know, a little wine table area where people are sampling wine and cheese or something.
Yeah. I don't know that we have a tasting room allowance there, but...
Well, I'm not saying a tasting room. I understand you've got your own ordinance issues. I'm just saying, for, they do have wine, and they have, you know, they have, they still, they used to make fudge there, and they sampled fudge for people.
I think that goes back to the question, it would be helpful to understand what the plan is, so that we can have a better visualization of what we're talking about.
But I mean, it comes down to, I mean, this is a question of trust, right? Like, if we were to approve this as it is now, and, I mean, it's just like...
Just questions.
Yeah, just questions.
I, I appreciate the concern. I mean, I guess the way we look at it, we're just confirming that the right exists to build what we thought the Planning Commission approved in 2004. And that master site plan is what they want to build out, which contemplated a variety of retail, restaurant, deli-type uses, based on the narrative Mr. Dimick had put together.
And my fear would just be that your predominant applicants are going to be these kind of restaurant, deli-type uses, and I would be worried that this whole area could be flooded with a lot of them, and have, I mean, you could, if we approve this this way, you get nine units for the entire building, and then nine tenants for the entire building, and the, okay.
All right, we're just asking questions. So if no one else has any other questions, we should, yeah.
May I ask a question of the Speaker?
Absolutely.
Ms. Garrett, in your Exhibit A to the May 20 letter that you sent to the city, at the very last page of that exhibit...
Page number?
Help me, Kathy, please. Do you have that document in front of you?
I have, I have so many Exhibit As at this point. I hope I have the right one.
This is Exhibit A to your May 20 letter.
Okay. So this is iPad Page 91, and printed Page 207.
The last paragraph on that page is entitled with, "Use is not included in the 2004 use permit." "Use is not included in the 2004 use permit."
190.
And you say, "Under the 2004 use permit, the Sonoma Cheese Factory does not include the 8,480-square-foot expansion areas..."
Wait, can you wait one second?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
191? Oh, 91.
iPad, 207 printed.
The second sentence of that paragraph reads, "While the Sonoma Cheese Factory includes cafe, bakery, coffee, delicatessen, and wine bar uses, among other similar food service spaces, it does not include a full-service restaurant." So it's your understanding that the use of permit did not include a full-service restaurant?
That's correct, Mr. Walter.
And what is a full-service restaurant, in your view?
My understanding in having conversations with public market, food market-type vendors or developers, is that a full-service restaurant would be like a Mary's Pizza Shack or something, where there's actually sit-down eating, you know, for 50 guests who are patrons, who are sitting in that space. We, we did not envision that as, as a specific use contemplated under the 2004 use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any legal definition about full-service restaurant? Is that, is there any inherent meaning to those words?
Depending on what the council does, we may end up coming up with a definition of that.
All right, all right, thank you. Are there other members of the public who would like to comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Nina Rispicio, daughter of Pete and Jackie Viviani. In 2004, Dad put in this permit, asked for this permit, was granted. He worked hard towards this. In 2006, he put the gelato, the fudge, the espresso, you name it, back there. His vision and his desire to do more like a public market idea, open mall, there's different variations of names, I guess we all could say. He had a vision, knowing that this is how our world of commercial retail, deli gathering place to be. We were given the task to continue this for him. We hope this goes forward. We need to be prosperous on this mall, um, excuse me, on this property. We want to stay alive as owners, as business owners, for our community. Dad had this vision for people to come in, to have spaces, local tenants, local wares, to be part of this community for, at a gathering. And I hope, and I pray, and I have to say I pray, that this is passed in the memory of my father and my mother. For us, we were given this task to bring and keep life for the Sonoma Cheese Factory on this plaza of Sonoma, and I thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Garrett, did you turn in the receipts to the city clerk? I did, okay, great, thanks so much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Good evening. My name is Gia Biaki, and I am actually a resident of Sebastopol. But I've been following this project for a couple of years now. I, I'm a business owner in Sebastopol, I grew up there. I've lived in Sonoma County my entire life. And while I do not have my finger on the pulse of everything that's happening in the city of Sonoma, I do closely follow similar development topics, especially one that happened recently in my hometown that I am now a part of. So I've been a business owner at the Barlow for five years now, and we went through a very similar resistance of this type of commercial development in, in our town when the Barlow was proposed. And while these are different types of projects, I do see similarities. And, and I understand there's a lot of terminology and technicalities that are complicating this for everybody, as well as a... And, and I understand there's a lot of terminology and technicalities that are complicating this for everybody, as well as a large time span. But, and all due respect, the idea of a marketplace is a very old-world idea and has been happening in Europe and countries all over the world for, you know, hundreds of years, regardless of what it's called and, and how we define it. And I think that, you know, new ideas can, can often be just not easily digested because we don't have a palate for them, I guess. And, and there was great concern about the, the Barlow, including a lot of similar ideas, parking and traffic and uses within that space, because it was all production. And this was twelve-and-a-half acres we're talking about, a much larger footprint. And we haven't had any problems with parking or traffic. I mean, there's been an increase just because that's kind of life. But we've seen a really positive impact on our community, and there's a beautiful cross-pollination of businesses, breweries, and restaurants and retail. It really enhanced our community, and I think you guys have a wonderful opportunity here to allow the, the family to flourish and, you know, improve this existing building.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Mark Mizetta. I live at four fifteen Easton Drive, Sonoma. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-seven. I met the, I met the Viviani, I met David Viviani first through the Cheese Factory, because at the time I was a, a food rep, independent gourmet food rep for several, like fifteen companies. We, we set up the Marine World Concessions. The fellow I worked for set up Farrell's Restaurant. Candy, it's a funny thing, but candy is based upon traffic. You can put candy in almost any place and you'll do ten percent almost of the volume, whatever type of business that is, because it's an impulse item. But being my wife also has a store here, The Total Look, a women's dress shop. And the fact of the matter is that today, it's hard enough for anybody to survive in this business. Because if you take note of what's happened in this industry, in the gourmet food industry, my family is Mizetta Foods. Mizetta Foods is all over the world now, but that started as a specialty food business and where the, most of the people were not buying those products. Now they're an everyday product. And what happens to a place like the Cheese, and it's, well, I should say, it's interesting to note, there are stores like the Cheese Factory, for the most part, have all gone out of business. They've gone out of business in production. The one in, there was one in Pleasant Hill, Pleasanton, that's out of business. And why are they out of business, all, all these people? Because they can't make a living, because all these products are being absorbed by specialty markets. So you have to allow diversification in these businesses if you want to keep them going. They just won't survive. And I mean, it's, it's just, that's the way it is today. And I mean, whether this is a restaurant or a deli is totally irrelevant. Who cares? Does it make any difference? Everybody's fighting over terms here, and they don't make any difference. I've owned two delis myself, and I put in ice cream, I put candy in, because you need to generate business to pay the rent. So I, I would urge that you let them do what they want. It's their business, their vision. It really isn't up to the city to decide what they carry and how they allocate the space. I agree, you've narrowed the space down. I think it's adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Maria Viviani, owner of Sonoma Cheese Factory. I just wanted to just backtrack a little bit and just say that the, what she was talking about with the, with the Barlow, being a, a concept that's been around for, you know, many centuries, actually. My dad got that first idea, I consider him an innovator. He got the first idea when he knew he wasn't going to be making cheese anymore. He needed to do something with this space. We took a trip to Italy. We went to Florence. We walked through some public markets, and he saw, you know, food and deli and ice cream and flower markets. And, and that's where he got the seed of the idea to develop the property. So anybody trying to say that he didn't have this intention is incorrect. He's been dreaming about it for a long time. He did see the Oxbow, he saw that realization of what he saw in Italy happen in Napa, and he wanted to bring that to Sonoma. He thought it would be a great opportunity for Sonoma, because it would bring more interesting food and retail ideas to the plaza. It would give people an opportunity to have a presence on the plaza that would never be able to afford renting out an entire building. So he liked that idea of bringing people close together, bringing new food ideas and opportunity for other Sonoma County businesses to have that presence. So bringing that whole specialty market to the plaza is something that he thought would bring the community together. So, you know, having it be so divisive has been kind of hard, you know, because we didn't intend for it to cause so much division. But the intention behind it is to bring people together and to make something better for Sonoma. So please consider passing our request to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelso Barnett, three twenty-eight First Street East. I'm a member of the Planning Commission, but I'm not speaking in that capacity. I do live within five hundred feet of the project, and so I can make a few comments about that, I believe. The first thing I would say is that state law allows me to speak about potential environmental effects on my property, but I don't know what those are, because a CEQA exemption that you're being asked to approve tonight, or you're being asked to approve items under a CEQA exemption from two thousand and four, was inappropriate. It was for something under ten thousand square feet in urbanized areas. We all know Sonoma's non-urbanized area. And so in my view, I don't think you can make any approvals under a two thousand and four CEQA exemption that was inappropriate and illegal. I actually didn't plan to come tonight. I was watching at home and decided I, to come, because I thought I could shed some light on two issues that had been brought up by staff. And so there was these questions hanging out. The first one was number of seats that were in the building at the time of this use permit application in two thousand and four. I would testify and put into the record that there were, at a maximum of four tables inside in two thousand and four, before this application was made. Two in the front against the windows, and then one to two in the coffee area, which was in the southeast area of the building in the twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot plan in two thousand and four, before it was changed. Most of the seats are on the outside. I know this from experience, because I worked there for four years during high school, and carried those seats from the patio, inside, outside, sometimes two to three times a week for four years. So I know and would testify to exactly how many seats were in that building, because I moved them frequently. Secondly, and I have about a minute left, there's been a lot of discussion about what the vision for this property was, and Pete Viviani's vision. I knew Pete Viviani. I think he was great, as all members of the Viviani family are. And I don't know what he thought in two thousand and four. There's been testimony to the fact of what he thought in two thousand and four. All I would say is, it was just said that he wanted to bring the Oxbow Market to the plaza in two thousand and four, but that was opened in two thousand and seven. So in my view, that's not possible. Secondly, if you go to the Index Tribune back in two thousand and four, and I'd like to submit this article in the record, there are two lines that I think are important. The first is, although plans are still sketchy, a main corridor would wind through the building. And then Pete Viviani of the Sonoma Cheese Factory said the proposal is still extremely tentative. And so these lines from two thousand and four Index Tribune article doesn't sort of, in my view, gel with the vision that has been described tonight. I'd like to add that to the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Perry Panayawa, and I didn't mean to talk on this subject until the Barlow was mentioned and the Oxbow. But my son worked for the owner of the Barlow for a year and a half. And I think this young lady over here that spoke, that has a shop there, I would like the council to definitely take a look at the background, especially recently with the flooding and what happened to those people. And we're talking about a much bigger complex than right here in our little plaza. And I would also agree that my youngest daughter and one of the Viviani children went to St. Francis together. And I had many opportunities to go into the old Cheese Factory. And I would agree with Mr. Barnett that there was probably four, five tables at that time, and most of it was a cheese operation. And then when they got in trouble with leaving out the cheese and the alleyways and stuff and had to move it over to, you know, A Street, I think that area was empty for a little while. But the way they, they closed up, if they kept to that kind of, you know, the ice cream, the candy, would be fine. But now we're starting to talk about Oxbow and the Barlow, which totally will not fit. And I think we need to really know what their plans are, what kind of retail food items, you know, what are these nine retail shops they're considering before you agree, sorry, agreed to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Hill. I'm a friend of the Viviani family. And I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I just wanted to make a few comments after other guests have spoken. And one is that I, I don't think that anyone can take into consideration anything that's printed in a news article. We don't know the, if that can be validated. News articles have been known to be one-sided or not documented correctly. So I would like to just mention that right off the bat. I also think that the ideas that are being presented to you would be amazing ideas for local vendors that don't have a presence on the plaza, to have some type of footprint, to be able to display some of their items or food items. I don't know what they would be selling, but I think it's an opportunity for those that couldn't afford their own retail space on the plaza. And I also think that, you know, this Cheese Factory has been in business for eighty-plus years. I think that it would be tragic to see it come to an end because of not coming to agree, an agreeance on terminology. They have been running with a deli-style restaurant with, since I've been going there since two thousand and, prior, there were more seats than two in the back. It's always been filled with people eating gelato and drinking coffee and having pastries. And I think it would be very sad to see that part of Sonoma's history taken away after this weekend and the support that was in there. It was just amazing to hear how families want to see, have a place for their families to go and have a little something for everyone. And I know that the Viviani family has put a lot of thought and consideration into not taking away from current restaurants or businesses that are there. They would not think of putting anything in that building that would compete with their neighbors that are already in business and well-established. They respect their neighbors. They're trying to add to their success as well as their own. And I think that they should be considered as far as adding something that people want in Sonoma Plaza, because if you're not a drinker and you have small children and you want someplace to go and gather after a baseball game or an event at school, they should all be able to have a place where they can go and gather, and there would be a little something for everyone. So I really just hope that you will allow them to continue running the business as they've been doing, but doing some business or some building renovations to try and just make it current. It's outdated. And I, I don't think anyone will be disappointed with the final product once they're finished.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, lawyers. My name is David Viviani. I'm a Sonoma native, and tonight I'm going to be Mr. Switzerland, too. I, there's been much reported in the papers about this issue and about the Cheese Factory and, and on Facebook. There's one item that I'd probably like to address tonight, is that the increase of my age. I'm not seventy-four. Monty, Monty Toscano and I hope that the, the trust in my sisters can find a solution with the city of Sonoma. We sincerely mean that. The, we trust that the city will do the best for the historic plaza and to find a path to return the Sonoma Cheese Factory to an affordable and popular enterprise. And, and I'm not getting any younger. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, I will close public comment. I did have one question before we have our discussion. In terms of abandoning the use and vested rights, what period of time, since we don't know what the new Cheese Factory would be, but there's no plan to continue what it is, at what point would the, the grandfathered uses be, would they lose that right? If I'm explaining that clear? When is, when will the current use be deemed abandoned?
Assuming that the current use is vested, it's abandoned in one year of non-use and intent not to recontinue the use. You have to show both non-user and intent not to recontinue. And this takes a year. Under our code, it's a year.
Okay. Thank you. And now council discussion. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Hanley?
All right, I'll go first. And this is certainly a very nuanced project, which, you know, the appeals we've had before have been like very big projects with lots of elements, setbacks, you know, hide exceptions, all these things. But this one is pretty concrete. It's one thing. It's just unusual. And it's, I would say, proposition. And it's difficult, because everything that we're talking about happened fifteen years ago. And so first I wanted to say where we had several public commentators talking about the concept of having some sort of marketplace, like Oxbow, and it'd be so great for Sonoma. And I don't think that, I don't know for sure, but my guess would be that this council just has no problem with this concept. It's actually a great idea. I love the Oxbow. I had a food business for five years. I always dreamed of being in culinary promenade. However, that's not the question that we're answering today. Like the answer, the question isn't, wouldn't it be cool if we had our own Oxbow here? That is not the question. Like the question is, does this particular property have a use permit that was allegedly granted in two thousand and four, that somehow would encompass what they are describing as this use permit encompassing today? And I think that it is made more difficult by the lack of precision in the documents from two thousand and four. However, I don't think that that limits what the city is, what the city's position on what things mean. I think it means that, that if there was something that should have been in this document that wasn't, then it wasn't in there. So, but I, moving on, I'm not totally convinced that the rights for this project are vested. I think it's a very fact-intensive query. And I think without, I think based on the information that we've given, that we've given today, even though I find it very hard to believe that 12 years could lapse without doing anything, and somehow all along, there was still an intention to do something. But setting that aside, I, for the sake of this moment right now, I would say that if we assume that there was enough activity or intentions manifested for this permit, perhaps it is still here today. And then the question is, well, what does the permit say? And this parking issue, you know, I've been caught up on that, and I look at this, and the only thing I, the only thing I see is, you know, this discussion of that they have a credit of 38 parking spaces. I've been a little bit confused by how, when this same property has come up in 2014, 2015, and 2018, that a request was made to credit the, you know, existing, you know, parking spaces and seats, you know, almost suggesting that perhaps that was not an existing right, that the Planning Commission in itself needed to grandfather and credit these things. And the interesting thing about this scenario is that we are not, the Planning Commission, hearing an application. This is not an opportunity to ask for a credit. Either it exists or it doesn't exist. If there is a credit that could be applied to a future project, once you submit an application to do that project, then perhaps there could be something there. But, so, I don't see that as having anything to do with this. And from what I've heard today, I think if something has vested, it was a shopping center permit. I find the deli references to be confusing, but to, but from as far as I can tell, it seems to me, me to be a non-conforming use specifically for a deli, specifically by the cheese factory. And I see the reference to the 80 seats outdoor, which the Planning Commission does seem to accept this as sort of being a thing, even though it doesn't seem like they actually, like granted a credit to this, but it seems everyone was operating on this belief. So I see it as a shopping center permit with a non-conforming deli use that is limited to exactly where it was when the permit was issued with 80 seats. And on top of that, I know we got a lot of, we'll probably talk about this more, the letter we got about, you know, restaurant seats from this June 24th letter today about how to calculate up to, how many seats? 152 plus 38 seats, so 190 seats. Like that, like, I mean, it just seems like it's double counting things, and I just didn't, like, it just doesn't make any sense to me to be that much. So I, I don't even think that there was never a permit for any seats at all. But since this, the Planning Commission seemed to accept the fact that there was 80 seats, that I think it's not a stretch to say perhaps there were 80 seats. But that's what I'm thinking right now.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
I'll go next. You know, it's interesting. I see people all the time reading something on the windows of, of the cheese factory, Sonoma Cheese Factory. And I've walked over there, and people have said, what happened? I really love this. We used to come here. And, and I, I understand. And the thing I guess I always get annoyed at is parking. Because we are the only ones that have the answer to parking. It's not the cheese factory. It's not Vela Cheese. It's not El Dorado Hotel. It's us. We can't get our act together to get going on Casa Grande. That's where parking is. That's what we could, should do, and it's wrong that we've never really attacked it. I've made suggestions in the way that we can look at it rather than going the sweet way. I, I think there's another way to look at, look for parking. And, and to blame restaurants and businesses on the plaza for that, I, you know, is really a problem for me. But I have found that, not being as specific as Councilmember Hundley, but you know what? The cheese factory is not just a business. It's a place where you build relationships. That's what it is. And I think here in Sonoma, that means an awful lot to the people who live here, hopefully to the new people that are moving here, because they can go in and they can buy a product that they really want to, you know, they want to see you successful, and they would like to be able to buy a product. I know the question is, you know, this with respect to the issue of whether it fits, you know, possibly SEQA, all of that, those issues. But I still believe that this is a business that this town needs, and I really, I really support it. You know, there are a lot of moving parts. I just saw the attorney hand over bills, and I don't even know if the, if the planning director's ever seen those bills. Never, you know? And so now they're supposed to be something that we put together on that. That I find, you know, just, it's disturbing. The other thing I think I'm disturbed by is the issue of a prolonged permit that just is stagnant, stagnates. That's our fault again. We don't, we didn't have the ability to say, you better get, get going. You better do this. You better move forward. I don't remember that. And I actually think we're even researching ways to be able to do that much better, because there have been other businesses that have gone over the limit as well. So, you know, I really support, I support this, this project, and I hope that we can come to some kind of a compromise with respect to whatever this council believes should be happening. But, you know, I think the city of Sonoma needs, needs the Sonoma Cheese Factory back. As I said, you build relationships. You're not just a business. Thanks.
Thank you. I can go next. I think with regard to the fundamental concept that the cheese factory space should be updated and modernized and that it should be used in a new way, I think that makes a lot of sense. And that's why I had so many questions about what the plans are for the space. I'd really like to know what those plans are, because I'm not sure that what you're asking for, the permit you're asking for, is going to allow that. And I think we are in a really, it is a really difficult spot. It would be much, much, much more straightforward if we had a new application starting today, saying, in this footprint, these are the things we want to do. This is the plan we have going forward, and there wasn't all of this history. But, you know, we have 15 years of history of action that was taken and action that wasn't taken that really complicates the matter. And so all of the detailed questions I was asking about what is allowed under the law relate, and what do these words mean are, are really so I can have a better understanding of what does this permit allow? And so it would be much easier if we had an application asking for what you want specifically, and then we could allow that. It's very complicated to take a permit and shoehorn something else into it, and that, that's one of my concerns. The city has rules about how, when you are supposed to exercise your use permit, and it is not in our interest to allow use permits like this. You know, I hope we never have a hearing, this is for the staff, I hope we never have a hearing like this ever again, because I don't think it's fair to anyone to try and take something from 15 years ago and figure out what happened. I don't, and it's not fair to the council. It's not fair to the applicant or the staff. And this is a very unfortunate situation that we are in today. It's very difficult. But I would agree with Councilmember Hundley that from the record, it seems like what was approved was a shopping mall with a grandfathered use of a deli, not nine food businesses. I think that if this were applied for today, a new use permit, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Shore, but a new use permit would be required for all new restaurants that were in there, and it wouldn't be by right. Those are the rules. And so I think what's happened here is there's a desire to have a really good project, which all of us support. And then there's the method of getting to that, which is taking a 15-year-old use permit that wasn't exercised that much. And if it was, it was barely within the year, and trying to make that work. I, I'm not really clear why that's the approach here, instead of just coming forward with a great project that we could all support and having a fresh hearing on it. So if this permit has been exercised, I, I think the meaning of it is that it is a retail shopping mall. I think that's what this is, so. Councilmember Cook?
Well, I'll go ahead and go next. I've been very quiet. I've been reading this for the last, there's a lot of pages. Good thing I have a lot of time on my hands, because my kids can just sit there while I'm reading. The hardest thing being on the council is when you're doing appeals. And lately, it's been a lot about land use, because what you turn into is you turn into a judge who has to look through a lot of old papers and rules that, you know, I'm not going to beat up our ordinances here, but, well, maybe I am. You know, the city of Sonoma is a small town. It's always been a small town. So a lot of our ordinances and a lot of things that we have done, you know, probably weren't written by a lawyer. They were just, you know, that's just the way things are. So I do agree with my colleagues that it is hard sitting here, trying to figure it out. And I'm sure that my decision will be liked by some and others won't. But I've always said, if you look at the individual making that judgment call, they take the facts and figures that they're given, and then they do a determination. My determination is the same as staff. I do believe that it is not expired or abandoned. I do believe that the Sonoma Cheese Factory is a great asset for Sonoma. It's hard to come up here and try to figure out, making a decision that could ruin a historical venue that we have. And it's not my decision to really see what I think, if there should be two pieces of candy being sold or 10 pieces of candy. What my job tonight on the city council is to make the determination of yes or no. And I will be voting tonight that, you know, to, you know, to grant the appeal and go with the city staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey?
So I, I feel like I have an advantage, because I grew up in Sonoma and I, I watched, I, I loved the cheese factory. I really did. I, I wanted to have my own cheese factory. I loved it so much. And I wanted to have my employees all live on top of the cheese factory and all live together. My grandpa called me a communist, and that's all great. So I, I wanted to, I, I've always loved it, and, and I remember it before the cheese-making went away. And you would see, they would have a big screen, and they had videos playing of the, the people making cheese, and you could see them making cheese through the window, and it was fantastic and really interesting. And I was junior in high school when this use permit was allowed. And what's interesting to me is that we have the 2004 use permit. And one of the key points of it is that the owner now proposes to develop the property as a retail shopping mall with an expanded cheese factory retail area as the theme and anchor store, right? And then we have the 2006 permitting, which they used that to dismantle and take away all the cheese production stuff that was happening in the green area, and I think I named that color correctly. And they tore down the wall, and they moved into that area with gelato and espresso and stuff that, I think all of those things would be required to have a restaurant use permit if they were located anywhere else. I know Sweets Goop certainly has a restaurant use permit. I don't know sure if the chocolate factories on the, on the plaza have restaurant use permits. And so to me, I think that, one, the expanded use, here in the 2004, it says with an expanded cheese factory retail area, I think that's the 2006 permit. And that's what we're doing here. We're, we asked for 2006 permit to expand the cheese factory retail deli area. And then I think the city's been really confusing for these owners and subsequent owners, because they've allowed for what we would consider restaurant uses now to be put into this new area. So if we were defining all this as just retail, like clothing or pre-made food that nobody had to touch, then why did we let them do deli and coffee in the back without additional use permits? I, I guess it's because it's the same owner. I'm a little bit confused about that. If I owned just a deli, and then I open up a full-service coffee bar, and then I open up a gelato place, and then I open up a fudge spot inside of my deli, do I need additional use permits? I guess that's rhetorical. It could be answered. So to me, I, I agree with staff largely. I think that the front space, that whole section is, we've, we've allowed food uses there multiple times. We've, in a group, in a group kind of area, we've allowed the deli to be there for a long time. They expanded and added restaurants uses outside where they were cooking and preparing pretty solid hamburgers. And, and I think that that's all, that was all part of that. So that front area has really been kind of a restaurant space for a long time now. And I think that that 2006 really shows, I mean, I'm not sure if Mr. Viviani was alive at the time, but I think he was. And so kind of shows that vision. I, I agree with the point that there are marketplaces throughout the world that can be defined in this way and were at the time. So yeah, I think, I think that they have vested their, their rights in that way. As far as like, what are you going to do and what the plan is? The plan is to have nine tenants in this place selling a variety of wares, and some of them will be food. And I think it's somewhat appropriate to limit that to the front area. I think we do need to define what a full-service restaurant is in certain terms. I think we maybe need to limit the number of food service places that can be in the front, because I don't want there to be nine up there. And then the back is just storage space. I think that could get a little bit confusing. So maybe there's a way to work around that if the, if the Viviani Trust would agree to that. And then I think, you know, if you want to add more seats, you got to come back. What the seat number is, I, I would be fine with staff's recommendation, because I want it to work. So that's where I'm at with this whole thing. I, I really do, I, I think that not only is the cheese factory a wonderful place in town and a really core piece, not only do I think that, and I think everybody thinks this. I'm not saying if you vote against this, you don't think that. I think every, I know everybody thinks this. But I think that there are solid arguments on both sides, but I'm convinced, especially with the 2006 permit, that that is vested and that this is, this is an allowable use of, of the space. So that would be my opinion. And there's a big.
All right. So a question for Jeff Walter. With regard to the additional items in the resolution, do you need direction on that, or what are they going to be?
Let me suggest, we've taken pretty close, careful notes of what you've all said. Let me, let us make, give it a crack at drafting a resolution. And your next meeting may, may spend some time going over it and wordsmithing, changing some things and not others. But I think it's best to have something that we can react to. We've heard for, well, Mayor Harrington, you've, you've said that you think it's essentially a retail use permit, a grandfathering, a deli use, probably to be located in the front of the, of the facility. And I don't know if, if your opinion, it would include any kind of limitation on seating, inside or out. That's something you've not expressed an opinion about, and that might be helpful to hear, because others have expressed opinions about seating. I think Councilmember Hundley indicated that she thought the seating was 80. That would be her, her cap. And it's unclear whether that 80 seats would be for outdoor purposes only, or it didn't matter to you, indoor, outdoor, at the discretion of the, of the applicant?
I mean, based on the documents, it seems it was referencing outside seating. But I don't, it seems that the Planning Commission at the time could have interpreted that to mean 80 seats. I just wanted to throw in one more comment that uh, our development code does define restaurant. It's actually a very clear definition of what a restaurant is and there's a very clear definition of what retail is. So these are words that have very precise meanings.
Yeah, but they weren't interpreted precisely by this city for this use with this project.
I don't think the term restaurant was ever used. I think they were calling it something that didn't exist. Therefore, they were using a definition that existed and then they were adding something to it, kind of creating their own thing. But that doesn't suddenly change it into a restaurant permit because it's a very different thing. And other, you know, food businesses on the plaza had to go through a whole restaurant use permit process. Um, and there's a reason for that because there's such an intensity of use. Um, you know, there's uh, more parking requirements and sequel review and all these steps that have. And you know, you can hate the details of all this process, but the fact is it is very important to be extremely precise. And the fact that they were not as clear as they were a long time ago is the reason that it is harder to figure out today. But I don't think that that means just sort of like, you know, making up what you think should happen. I think that all these definitions have, uh, words have definitions and restaurant is a very specific definition and general retail is a very specific definition.
Uh, Mayor, did you have some ideas on seating? Any thoughts about that?
I guess I'll, uh, I would agree with Councilmember Hunley's comments that the only amount of seating that was ever discussed was 80.
Well, I think the issues that are, I think most paramount here are number one, is there a vested right? If two, as to what is it vested?
Right.
We've heard, we've, we've addressed the issue of seats. Uh, we've addressed the issue of, of deli. Some, some believe it was a grandfathered deli, but nothing more. Others are more inclined to follow this, the staff's recommendation that in fact there, there was a certain amount of square footage that could be used for restaurant use. Um, that's certainly the staff's recommendation that 5,310 square feet can be set aside for restaurant use.
Yeah, I mean, just the reality of the space is that area, I mean, other than food, what did they sell there? I mean, maybe a couple tee shirts and they had picnic baskets, but other than food, that's what was there. That's what's always been there is food.
But it's a totally different question. So what they said is, we have a business that does these things and we want to change it over to a new business and here's what our new business will be. And our question is, what was the new business? What did they say it was going to be? They said it was going to be a shopping mall with a deli. And so you're saying, well, it just makes sense that we should let them. That's why it's so difficult that we're going back to a 2004 use permit. We don't have the new project in front of us.
But I'm, I'm saying we already did let them. I mean, we let them, they, they got their permit. They got their expanded, uh, they, they got their permitting. They built into the other area and they moved more food deli stuff into that area. And we let that happen as an entity. Not us, but as an entity. So now we're going to say, now we're going to redefine all that and that doesn't get to happen.
It's like literally not redefining anything. The definitions haven't changed since 2002. It is exactly the same as it was.
Yeah, but we're going to treat them differently.
Just because the city didn't step in and be like, hey, you're not conforming with your use permit, doesn't mean that they weren't not conforming with their use permit. And in fact, when this is all said and done, the permit's still going to be whatever the permit was. So if someone wants to come in and be like, oh, you didn't have a restaurant permit, I don't see how it, it could suddenly transform what they got in 2014. Are we going to rewrite it to be what these people think it is? Or is it going to be an interpretation of 2004 when it's still just going to be whatever it actually was in 2004, open to whoever wants to push it?
The 2004 use permit will have a, a, a new description and it will be your resolution. You will define what that 2004 use permit allowed. That's going to be the purpose of this exercise.
Well, because I think shopping mall does not even apply. I mean, what I see as a shopping mall does not apply to the, uh, the Sonoma Cheese Factory.
I agree. I don't think that a shopping mall is going to be built under this permit, but that is the permit. That is the permit. That's the problem. We have our application, we're, we're being asked to say that a permit to build something that they don't want to build is valid. So why not just come forward and say, this is what we want to have and let us approve that use permit? That just seems like a much better process than picking up an old one and saying, okay, it doesn't say that, but we'll add a resolution to it and we'll make it say that. It's just, I mean, this is just a Pandora's box of every person who ever had a use permit to come forward and say, here's the new thing I want and uh, let's have it that way. I, I think this is very, not without, not with regard to your specific project, but with regard to public policy, this is just a very bad idea. So, so if somebody has a motion, you can make it.
So just, um, Jeff, does it make sense? So one, a couple things. Um, in a motion by, it kind of sounds like there's a majority that are supporting kind of in general, the recommendation from staff. Um, and it, we would be continuing this public hearing to, I assume the August 5th is our kind of, we have a special meeting on the 29th.
Well, I think it just depends on what our agenda is on that date with, about how full it is. So we'd have to, I mean, it can't just be continued to the next meeting. What is on that agenda?
I don't have that list in front of me. There were, there's a variety of things in the, in August that'll be coming. I think there's, there are, or some items coming back on some, some housing items. Um, so there's a variety of things in August. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the list with me or all of it in my brain right now.
Oh, that's fine. I'm just saying that I assume there'll be.
I'm saying the earliest, the earliest opportunity, um, because we have a special meeting on, um, special meeting on July 29th on general plan UGB. Then our first regular meeting is August 5th, um, and then August 19th. Those are the two meetings in August. And, but we do, Jeff, I'm looking at our attorney. We do need to, because this is a public hearing, we need to continue it to a date certain. So we don't have to re-notice and re-advertise. So it may be that we're putting them on the 5th and then we can determine whether we can hear it then or if we need to move it to another date. Jeff, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So part of the motion would be continuing the public hearing to, I think at this point, the August 5th. And then we can determine whether, looking at the overall, whether we can, um.
So your suggestion is not taking a vote on whether it's valid or not just continuing the whole thing?
No, no, no. I'm thinking part of the motion. So I think part of the motions are, one, continuing to the date, um, August 5th, continue the public hearing. Two, that um, determine that, um, it's vested. Three, the number of seats. And four, the area for the deli restaurant, um, and the square footage for that. I think those are, is there any other kind of key policy items, Jeff?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So if the mayor would allow, I'll move forward on a motion?
Absolutely.
And you know, can be accepted?
Let's take these motions uh, sequentially. The first motion we'd recommend be made is a motion to find that the use permit is vested.
Well, I'm going right by the recommendation by the council. Uh, council will action. I move for a resolution, uh, that's to agree with staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution granting the appeal determining that the 2004 use permit has been vested, vested and is not expired or abandoned, confirming that use of the subject property is allowed for up to nine tenant spaces, a deli restaurant use up to maximum 5,310 square feet plus outdoor dining area, and that remaining occupancy uses of the subject property are subject to the requirements of the development code to be heard. Coming back to the city council on August 5th.
Second.
Do we get a roll call?
Just the one, the only other item, sorry, um, Councilmember Agramonte that isn't mentioned and, and that was the, that summary comes to a lot of the items we need to talk about, um, was the number of seats. So do you want to specify the number of seats so we can just do one vote and have it all included? Or do you want to come back and talk about that one next?
Um, I'd like to come back and talk about that.
Thank you.
So we, I have a motion.
We had a second roll call?
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Agramonte?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Nope.
Mayor Harrington?
No.
Thank you. The motion carries three, two.
All right. And do we have another motion about the number of seats? Go ahead. He just said we would do this one.
Yeah, with, we, the staff recommends that the council find that the number of seats that are available is 103. Forty-one indoor and 62 exterior.
Is there a motion on that?
Um, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the number of 103 for seating for the uh, Sonoma Cheese Factory.
Second.
Roll call?
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Agramonte?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Nope.
Mayor Harrington?
No.
Thank you. The motion carries three, two.
The final motion should address where the 5,310 square feet of deli restaurant use can be located.
I move that.
Is that deli hyphen restaurant or deli meaning restaurant? What does that mean?
Deli slash restaurant slash retail. Well, we'll call it deli restaurant. Let's make it deli restaurant. And we will come back and, and actually help, we'll, we'll try to work out if, in this resolution will include some kind of definition of what a full-service restaurant is so that can be clearly excluded because they themselves are saying that that is not part of the use permit. But setting that aside for the moment, we need to know where you want the 5,310 square feet of deli slash restaurant use.
And you want it referred to by the letters on the map?
That would be very helpful. If you want to confine it to the original space plus the A space, that would be one way of describing it. Or if it can be uh, spread throughout the 11,000 square foot building, that would be another way of describing.
Can you show the map? Please?
So the 5310 that was been discussed, that's the area that says the 2860 and the 2450. The pink fuchsia and the green to the right of it. That 2462 is really 2450 and that's where you get the 2860 plus the 2450 to be the 5310.
So 2860 plus 2462 is the 53?
Yes, basically.
If anybody wants to make a motion.
I move that the restaurant, deli, retail space be confined to area A, the purple and green area. Fuchsia and green area.
I will second that one. I see the color more as a pink lavender. Yeah. So it would be what, it would be what the original A and the other A.
A roll call.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Agramonte?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Nope.
Mayor Harrington?
I have a question for Jeff. So basically, uh, this is by, this motion excludes it from being in the other areas.
Yes. It excludes deli restaurant use from any area but the pink fuchsia and green.
Yes. Are there any other issues to address here?
Was that your, I'm sorry.
I don't believe so.
Is that your, thank you. The motion carries four, one.
Sorry. Thanks. That's it?
I think so, yes.
Okay. So, so, uh, well, to the Vivianis, we look forward to seeing what will come of the cheese factory. I hope it will be wonderful. I know you've put a lot of time and energy into this. This matter will be continued to August, uh, right now it's continued to August the 5th. We haven't looked at our agenda for that night, so I don't know if it can actually be heard on that evening. And our staff will be working on a resolution to clarify some of the um, outstanding issues. So congratulations. We did, which part of that? Let's. And um, maybe we'll just take a, a brief continuance before we move into our next item. If the city council members would like to reconvene here, we can move on. What? I know. Uh, Madeline Agramonte, paging Madeline Agramonte. And if somebody wouldn't mind, could you grab the door just so we can um, have it a little bit quieter here? Thanks. So, thank you. With that, we are moving on to item 5.3 cannabis regulations. Um, this is continued from June 17th, 2019 zoning amendments, consideration, discussion, and possible action to introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance and might amending Title 19 of the Sonoma Municipal Code related to commercial cannabis businesses and to permit such uses in specified zoning districts in coordination. businesses and to permit such uses in specified zoning districts in coordination with the adoption of a new commercial cannabis ordinance amending Title Five of the Sonoma Municipal Code and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section fifteen oh six one B three and California Businesses and Professions Code Section two six oh five five H. The recommendation is to introduce and conduct the first reading. And before I turn it over to the staff, I want to make an announcement. Um, previously, this matter was continued because Councilmember Harvey and I were requesting formal advice from the FPPC regarding possible conflicts of interest and voting on the zoning based on where our residences are. We have received, um, letters from the FPPC today. We received them, um, clearing us, uh, to vote on those. And so we will be able to vote on those matters, and we can proceed tonight. And I don't know if the city attorney wants to add anything to that.
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah. The only thing I want to add, Mayor Harrington, for the record, I also, as a city manager, since I own property, also had a potential conflict that was also reviewed by the FPPC and cleared.
We're all clear.
We're cleared.
And I will turn it over to the staff now.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening again, right. Um, so before you tonight, um, if you recall, is commercial cannabis provisions that relate to Title Nineteen of our Development Code as opposed to Title Five that your council conducted the second reading on tonight. So the ordinance before you tonight, uh, has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, and the recommendation came forward. And as part of the recommendation, you discuss some of those elements when we discuss the fifteen recommendations of the commission. I'll get to those in just a minute as it relates to the zoning component. But what I do want to point out to you in the resolution, um, a couple of things that we did. Number one, because we, because we had regulations for commercial, excuse me, for, um, cannabis deliveries for medicinal purposes, because of the actions that you took in Title Five, we're now repealing those provisions in the zoning component. So, uh, rather than going through the use tables that we have, I just wanted to point that out, that that's, that is section, uh, two of the resolution on page two, and I apologize.
Oh, okay. So that's page two thirty-five of the paper packet and unknown section of the iPad packet.
And so you'll see that, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so we have actually indeed repealed the section that relates to delivery for medicinal purposes because that is subsumed and contained within the Title Five that you adopted, uh, tonight. We've also provided in the resolution some new definitions of commercial cannabis. And then, but most importantly, as it relates to where you can do the four types of cannabis, commercial cannabis businesses that you spoke about, you may recall that your council discussed allowing a retail, uh, facility only in the commercial zone, and all of the others, um, can be done in the mixed-use zoning district, the MX. And so we've reflected that in the use tables two-one, two-two, two-three, and two-four. There are a brand-new set of use tables. The last thing I want to point to your, for your attention is the Planning Commission, actually, if you recall, recommended just one retail in the commercial zone. So, uh, within your resolution, you do have, uh, excuse me, ordinance, thank you. Um, in the ordinance, you do have, uh, the buffer maps that show up that you've discussed previously do not include the recommendations of the Planning Commission. There's two areas the Planning Commission recommended changes to you. And this exhibit right here is the amendment to the PROD where the Planning Commission, uh, recommended to your council to include all of the commercial zoning districts on the east and west side of Broadway, uh, to the south where it terminates with that particular commercial zoning district. So that would be a recommendation. Should your council wish to do that, you can refer to this exhibit that I'm showing this evening. And also, uh, to another exhibit, I'll get to that in just a minute, which talks about the, uh, zoning of the uses in and around Sassarini. So this particular diagram is a little more convoluted in that your council did not, uh, you included the, uh, the Safeway Center, I'll just call it that, but did not include Fifth Street West, Fifth West Street, uh, Plaza. I'm gonna get that wrong, but, um, so what the Planning Commission did is they, uh, recommended that you don't include the Safeway Shopping Center because there's no practical purpose for it, for a retailer being there. And then they also included the area that projects westerly into the half of the, of the Fifth Street Plaza West, Fifth West Plaza, um, because that would be the furthest area away, uh, from the school that you could actually have, or, excuse me, closest, I reversed it. Um, and that's why they've modified the, the red area that your council could include should you be so disposed. Uh, and so, again, you would need to actually ask for that to be added into the ordinance as opposed to, uh, as currently constituted. They do not include those amendments of the Planning Commission. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any council questions? Seeing none, I will open it up for public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment, please come forward now.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Harrington and council. My name is Eric Pearson, E-R-I-C-H-P-E-A-R-S-O-N. I think you're aware of this, but I just wanted to, to draw attention to it, uh, to put this in perspective. Um, and that is state law doesn't require a six-hundred, six-hundred-foot radius, uh, from schools. And it sounds like everybody's aware of that, but I just think that's important to keep in perspective because I think, the, the point I want to make is let's approach zoning as liberal as you can because you have a conditional use process here. And, you know, looking through real estate, because we're interested in, in applying for one of these permits, uh, there's very few spaces, as I mentioned the last time I spoke here, available, um, for these locations. Um, whether they're for rent or for sale, there just, there's not a lot out there. So, um, use the use process to, uh, determine, you know, what's a good location. Um, I, I did see an earlier version, uh, where youth centers were there, and it looks like that's been eliminated, which I think is good. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to start? Councilmember Henley?
Um, I don't have too much to say. I do think that, um, it's a good step forward. I am concerned about the availability of properties that will, uh, comply with all of the other requirements. Um, and so that might be something that we could talk about in the future as everything starts to, um, play out and see what it looks like. But, uh, otherwise, um, I will be supporting this tonight, and I appreciate staff from, uh, for hustling and getting it all together. Oh, and as far as the Planning Commission Safeway thing, um, I'd rather stick with what we have.
Just one other question maybe before we leave. Councilmember Henley, um, you spoke about the, um, Safeway recommendation. What about the extension further south on the Plaza that was also the Planning Commission's recommendation?
No. I can go next. Um, so I second the comments of, um, Councilmember Henley, and I think that it could turn out that, um, various parts of this are not going to work, and we may have to come back and revisit them. But, um, we can try it and see how it goes for now. Um, I, I especially want to thank, um, well, the city staff, of course, but Jeff Walter for getting our FPPC letters done in time and getting all of this done before July one is amazing. Thank you very much. And shocking, I did not expect it to come in today. So, um, I think that's wonderful, and I, it'll be great when we have these completed, this whole chunk of work completed. So I'm looking forward to that as well. Um, but I support this and without changes suggested by the Planning Commission. Vice Mayor Harvey?
I also want to definitely thank staff, Jeff Walter, well done giving the FPPC letters, uh, in time, and David Store for all of your hard work on this. Um, really a lot, um, though, given our conversations, you've enjoyed it a little bit, uh, as you seem to do all things. Um... Hey, he's just, he's a happy guy. Uh, I obviously support this. Um, and I, you know, I would be comfortable with the Broadway buffer, but, um, I think that eliminating them all, and as the, the speaker suggested, just kind of letting that be a part of the use, uh, permit process makes a lot of sense to me, too. Um, so, yeah, I think we continue as previously proposed by the city council, and, um, there we go.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
The only thing I want, and I might be really digressing, and I'm sorry, but I know that, um, some time ago I made mention of the library, and I think, Jeff, you said that other cities are using the term especially, or, you know, that it has to be predominantly for children.
Primarily of
Thanks.
Youth, youth-oriented, yes.
Okay.
There are some communities have, have used that as a criteria for establishing the buffers.
Okay. Because that's, I mean, as I said, I think I gave something to every council member about the activities that take place at the library. It really is a moot issue because they're not even in that, you know, what's being considered. But I just want people to be aware of that, that there are a lot of activities for children from very young age, and I think they even have a teen room, and they also have tutoring going on. So I just wanted everyone to understand that. And I, I know what you said about the city, but I just want people to know that those activities do take place at the library.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move to, uh...
Waive the reading?
Way, yeah. Waive the, the reading of an ordinance amending Title Nineteen of the Sonoma Municipal Code relating to commercial cannabis businesses and permit such uses in specified zoning districts in coordination with the adoption of the new commercial cannabis ordinance amending Title Five of the Sonoma Municipal Code and finding the ordinance exempt from California Air Co., uh, California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section fifteen oh six one B three and Business and Professions Code Section twenty-six oh fifty-five H.
Second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Aggermonte?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Henley?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries three-two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mayor Harrington, we will need to continue this meeting to Sunday.
Okay.
So we can adopt this ordinance before the first of July.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to continue this hearing to, uh, Sunday? The thirtieth of-
We're going to continue, you're, we're actually continuing this meeting to Sunday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, so we're going to continue this meeting to Sunday, June thirtieth at?
We have to set a specific time, and we haven't done this.
Oh, okay.
So, um...
I suggest nine AM.
I would prefer seven AM.
That's fine also.
I'd rather it be nine AM.
I just do it so then we can have the rest of our day. So nine AM? Okay. So, so, so continue this meeting to June the thirtieth at nine AM.
So council, um, since this will be a second reading and a fairly brief meeting, we will keep staff to very limited as well, and we won't record this conversation, we won't record the meeting. Um, otherwise, I've got, we have to have Bob or someone come out on a Sunday, which I think this will be a fairly brief meeting.
So we will have minutes only, but not a video recording?
Yeah. Yeah. I think it'll be a brief meeting. It's a second reading, which usually put the second reading right on consent. So basically, it'll be on a consent calendar.
You'll be taking action. Sounds good. Is that, I made a motion? Do we have a, like, we need to have a second and a roll call, or no? Second? Okay.
As a mayor, you can continue the meeting to that time. So the mayor, the mayor has done, the mayor, you've done that?
I, I wish I had known that in December. No, I'm kidding. All right.
With the council's indulgence, of course.
Mayor Harrington, just, just, can you pause just on a different item for just a quick, I need to ask the attorney a quick question.
Yeah. I have a great report, actually.
Yes, the city manager reminds me that the continued hearing on the cheese factory resolution will not be a public hearing where new evidence can be brought forward and testimony will be heard anew, uh, all over again on the merits. It will be confined solely to the resolution itself. People can certainly talk to and speak to that. The Brown Act requires the council to allow that to happen, but there will not be an opportunity for new evidence, new, uh, material, new testimony that bears on the merits of, of the matter.
Thank you. Could you, would you mind communicating that to, uh, the appellant's?
Yes, we will do that. So I just wanted, because I think the language of the motion, um, again, we were moving fast, and I think it spoke directly that we'd be continuing the public hearing, and we suggest, I think, unless there's a concern from the council, that would be staff's recommendation.
My only concern is that the people who are here for that item have left.
Well, then they're going to come back, probably. And at which time, we will advise them that, yes, it's a hearing on the resolution itself, but not on the merits. It's not, it's not time to, to rehash everything that we've gone through already.
All right. Okay. With that, we can move on to the next matter, which is item seven, council member reports and comments, and I have a great report. Are you ready for it? On August the fifth, which is our first August meeting, we are going to be honoring Jean from the Swiss. Jean will be here. It will be Jean Day. Her last name is Powell. We found that out. And everybody loves Jean, I think, and so please spread the word. She'll be coming down here, and, um, I'm so excited that we have the opportunity to recognize her because she makes everything so nice for everybody, whoever goes to the Swiss. So if you, uh, want to come and, uh, show Jean some love, come to the city council six o'clock on August the fifth and, and be part of it. Are there any other council member reports?
Oh, could I, I'm sorry, could you remind me Steve Page and the Raceway? I forget. That's August also, or?
Um, yes, but I, um, I'm sorry, I think that might be the nineteenth that we've got. Yes, it's definitely is in August. We'll be honoring the Raceway for their fifty-year.
Yeah. And their philanthropic culture.
Uh, Councilmember Henley?
I met with the Sonoma County mayors and council members of Legislative Committee.
Oh, that's important.
And we discussed a variety of items, um, related to, uh, legislation affect, affecting the city, although I think, um, the city manager is going to speak more about this topic, but I was there.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. City manager, item eight point one.
Great. Just want to, um, before I, the, two items I would want to mention, one, as council's fully aware, PG&E, Public Safety Power shut-off. There's a lot of education and information that we're putting out, and there'll be more coming. We held a business meeting, uh, last Friday, and then tomorrow, well, there'll be a meet, two meetings at Vintage House for residents to come learn more, and even businesses can come and join if you weren't able to make the first one. So four o'clock to five o'clock and five o'clock to six o'clock. Want to thank, um, Herman Hernandez for being there and providing the information, and, uh, our kind of partners, Chamber of Commerce, has been taking the lead to help organize and put this together. So, um, it's an important issue. If you have questions, please come out. And then the second item I'd like to, um, talk to council about is I'd like to ask you to appoint a housing legislative subcommittee. As council knows, there's a lot of housing legislation moving through the state legislature. Um, and, um, I think what we should be positioned to try to do is come back in early August with, um, some recommendations from the subcommittee, working with staff about, um, for the council to take positions on a number of these housing bills. And a number of other cities are doing this. Mayor and council members have been talking about the legislation as well. Um, and that because some of this legislation is moving fast, I think we'll be fine to kind of talk about all the bills, the, probably the first meeting in August. But if for some reason there is a, a bill that is moving very fast and that could potentially negatively impact the city, uh, not only would I like you to appoint two of your colleagues to be on this housing ad hoc and work on this, but I'd like you to empower them to be able to advocate and take a position if there is, um, housing legislation that can negatively impact the city. So as we've talked about housing, it seems like there's a lot of consensus on issues of local control and housing issues by this council. So, um, that's my recommendation. And if you are supportive of doing that, I would ask you to figure out amongst yourselves and let us know. If we need to take a vote, we can, of who would like to be on the, what I'm going to call the Housing Legislative Subcommittee. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, I was, I scar, sorry, Madam Mayor, but I think Logan and Rachel have done, I mean, they're moving through this stuff, and who better would, for them to be that, to do that work.
If you are willing, that sounds great to me.
I'll second that.
I'd be honored to do.
I would be honored.
All right.
Works to work with Mr. Harvey again.
Okay.
We could double dip that meeting with working on the next steps for them coming out of the Housing Town Hall, so.
And I, and I just, my question was, is, um, what is he, State Senator Weiner? I, his bill talks about transportation- I, his bill talks about transportation hubs. That's where he wants all these big complexes, complexes to be built? We aren't a transportation hub. We may not even be involved. I'm not saying that shouldn't be part of this, but it's just something I've understood, and I could be wrong.
All right.
And just, it sounds like in terms of my recommendation, is there consensus on the council that the subcommittee has the authority to act on your behalf until we come back?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Perhaps after we're back. City Attorney?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Meeting's adjourned.